Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the May eleventh, twenty twenty one, Special City Council Meeting and Workshop. This session will be conducted remotely and council members will only participate electronically. For those viewing online, please ensure that you join this meeting using the following website. If you join this meeting using any other link, we encourage you to log off and then rejoin using that website. Public comment on any item apparent on the agenda may be sent to public comments at lewisdmaine.gov. Prior to it during the meeting and all comments received will be forwarded to the city council. Members of the public who are logged into the meeting online can make comments when invited to do so by raising your hand. And counselors are asked to raise their hands as well. And please keep a video on all the time unless previously excused. And with that, oh, Madam Clark, if you could take a roll call for attendance, please.
Sure, absolutely. Counselor from Ward one?
Here.
Ward two?
Here.
Ward three?
Present.
Ward four?
Present.
Ward five?
Present.
Ward six?
Present.
Ward seven?
Present.
Thank you. Also in attendance this evening, Mr. Mayor is Dennis Dotay, City Administrator. Dale Doughty, Deputy City Administrator. Heather Hunter is the Finance Director and myself is the City Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Agenda item number one, please.
Item number one, Resolve Approving the Fiscal Year Twenty Two Budget for the Lewiston School Department. Requested action to adopt the Resolve Approving the Fiscal Year Twenty Two Budget for the Lewiston School Department.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Counselor Ray, seconded by Counselor Khalid. And with that, we'll turn this over to Superintendent Jake Langless. Welcome. And Assistant Superintendent Karen Parkett, welcome. All right, so I'll turn this over to you, Superintendent Langless.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. If I could, I'd like to share my screen.
Absolutely.
All right, can everybody see that?
We can. Thank you.
I just want to kick off and do a quick run through of some things that have shifted since we last met. And start by saying how proud we are of our great city and when students blend mastery skills, creativity, identity, and display knowledge, something undeniable happens. And especially when they come back home after college and contribute back to our community like so many have. So the ask of us at the May fourth City Council Meeting, the request made by the council was in direction was to reduce the school committee proposed budget. We had a meeting scheduled on the fifth, actually to introduce our new high school principal. And we added the budget, obviously, as an important matter for discussion. And while there was some apprehension, I think, from the school committee because they really wanted to work at this, they did not adopt a new proposal with the following adjustments. To use $480,000 from existing fund balance, $40,000 in unexpended funds from adult education, which was slated to upgrade a youth facility or youth-sized restroom facility into adult-sized. Reduce the general fund local allocation by an additional $281,000. So the additional local allocation is now down to $815,115. And part of how we were able to do some things are through relief funds. And I heard a number of questions, both from counselors and from community. And I appreciate getting those questions so that we could try to address some of those, both in the slides and then any questions you may have after. But these funds are deliberately assigned to support students through the impacts of COVID-19. And as you know from other funding sources, there are always rules. We've worked to include items in this proposed budget that are not recurring. So any stoppage in the funding doesn't result in a cliff or an immediate halt, but it can result in a cycle that we can plan for. And I got some examples to share with you. So things that we use E-CUR for what I call relief funds for E-S-Y and E-S-D, which is the Extended School Year and Extended School Day. These are efforts that are made to help close the gaps that students may have in their instruction or their knowledge and grow their skill set. We've moved a lot of things to build up our supplies, make sure teachers have the instructional supplies they need. Books, we have textbooks and books in our libraries, things of that nature, that they do need a cycle of replacement or replenishment. Because of COVID, we have different structures, more books go out than used to. Classroom additions aren't really the option anymore, so we're able to acquire books that will last longer than just while the funding is available. In addition, we have obviously a lot of technology and software that's being used that we might not have otherwise used in different areas. And we're able to use relief funds for that. We've moved professional development. I don't want to say those are one-offs because I think professional development is a constant, but we have options within professional development as we move forward in the future. Interventionists, specifically around math, reading, and language work. We're looking to boost the level of support we can provide students. But again, that would be the understanding that these are new additional positions that we would use relief funds for with the conversation upon hire that these are relief funds to try to get our students back to recovery or through the recovery of the post-pandemic era. And there's no guarantee on long-term employment in that role. Also, social-emotional learning staff looking to boost that and have a robust support system for students, not just when they're at school, but making sure we've got kids coming back to school. Again, relief funds, when those funds start to dissipate, certainly we'd have to assess whether or not anything could continue. Administrative staff to facilitate the relief funds. You know, these funds have come to us and I feel fortunate from that sense, but these are taxpayer dollars. And I want to make sure we're good stewards of that. To do that, we do need additional staff to do the invoicing and monitoring of the projects and making sure we're drawing things down in a timely manner. Air quality projects, outdoor learning spaces, floating nurses, two of these. These are really when we have any of our nurses who need to be out with all the COVID-related protocols. We can't really run school without one, so we're looking to add the two floating nurses. Additional interpretation and translation services, everything that we push out, we push out in about seven different languages. And with lots of messaging because of COVID, there's additional need there. The Store Next Door EdTech, this position is designed to help facilitate resources to students and getting them connected to school and supporting them with other resources like coordinated tutoring efforts, things of that nature to get students back on track. For E-LMS teachers, this is an online program we use this year for the first time because of COVID, but we have found success and a lot of good feedback from students and parents. And we'd like to try to continue that model to see if it is, in fact, worth a future effort beyond COVID relief funds. So we'll be able to measure that as we go. Library surprise. A grade-one teacher and also a school counselor at Connors, they want to move to a teaming model. We can give that a try for a couple of years, but they're missing two components to do that in that team higher structured support model. And we can seek to use these our funds for that. Additional subs, one thing we have found this year, our substitutes have been fantastic, but we've had to allocate additional subs to buildings each day to help cover things that pop up. Additional programming with community partners, things like day programming and after-school programming, continue to do that work as part of the remediation effort. Next is remediation, looking at that challenge that teachers will have with students who have big gaps and how we try to close them. Additional work hours, personal protective equipment. Those are just a number of examples in and around the E-CUR funds and how we're going to use them. I wanted to list those out and talk about some strategy behind them because we are looking for ways to ensure that we can be true to the E-CUR funds as required, but also to try to do some things that we can assess as we go to see if it's something that we do want to try to invest in as a local community and maintain or not. And also, some things that we can do to make sure that we don't put ourselves in a position where the supply shelves are empty and the money's gone too. So we're going to be smart about how we get those things in so we can create that cycled approach to replenishing things after this, so it's not just a cliff. Fund balance, we've had a lot of discussions about fund balance, something that when I first came in and looked at last year's budget and some of the numbers that were coming up by way of audit, it didn't feel like an ideal model by any stretch, and so we continue to work on that. The numbers that we have this year are what we have to work with, and I want to continue to get better as a school department with that. But we have our school committee and also our finance subcommittee have already been discussing this, a fund use policy in March. I know that's something that Heather and I have talked about, and it's something that we need to develop and make sure that however we work into our fund use or remaining balance use and expended funds, it makes sense not just for the school department, but also for taxpayers and then in the balances, if you will, with the city. We're cautiously projecting there'll be a fund balance from the current year. This is due to some cost savings due to COVID and also use of relief funds in other areas where we're able to carry that money forward. Again, it's all taxpayer dollars. These are local taxpayer dollars, a larger part that we'll be able to carry forward. Working with city staff, as I mentioned, working with Heather, but also Dennis and Dale and looking for that good working relationship. I feel we already have it and we're working on being good stewards of taxpayer dollars and multi-year planning. I really think that's where we're headed and it's what we need for our community. And we're very aware of funding sources and their timeframes, and we include that in our planning. So we're not creating a situation down the road that was not thought of. From a tax calculation perspective, these are just some highlights. Use of the carryover fund balance of five million. An additional local allocation, as I mentioned, of $815,115. I left off the 74 cents. This is a general fund increase. And just to note that I'm really proud of our community and others for being involved in the LHS expansion, that program, that process is making great gains, and we anticipate that opening late next fall. But that's really a game changer, I think, for our high school and what our students will experience. And I'm just proud of our community for supporting it. We do have to pay that bill, and there's about 40 cents in this year's increase connected to that. And then 21 cents on other items in general fund for a 61-cent increase as proposed, bringing us from 1037 to 1098 from a local tax perspective. And this plan includes a lot of things to be really proud of, I believe, supports our language learners, opens new opportunities for students and community, especially with our expansion, celebrates identity, creativity, and expression with our arts-focused first floor over there, maintains our current staff. And just a quick message to members of the City Council. I believe we can operate with this budget if approved. Upon your approval, the voters will ultimately decide and can indicate if they feel the budget is too high or too low. I want to say that publicly as well so that people understand if they're feeling like it's too low or too high. There's an item on the referendum where you can indicate your thoughts on that. And I think that that might be a resource for further conversation, again, should this be approved by the City Council. And with that, I'd like to just open it up for questions.
Good, thank you. So a couple of ground rules this evening. So by charter, all counselors, I'm sure you're all aware, City Council controls the final budget number. But when it comes to policy decisions, how to use that funding, that truly is not within our purview, that's within the school department's purview. So I, and it would always be, it would never be appropriate for us as a City Council to direct like our finance department to check their finance department, things like that. There's truly clear lines created by the charter for a reason, not reason, of course, because you don't want like a dictatorship council that controls everything. But the charter's clear that the council decides the final budget. And I think that's just a checks and balances that was put in place long before any of us were involved in politics. I want to reemphasize what Superintendent Langless said this year. Staff from both the school department and the city working together has been better than I've ever seen in my time as an elected official. And I really appreciate the good work of our city administrator and superintendent Langless to have to really have an expectation of that happening with staff members. So that's something that is good and should be expected by elected officials as well. As a council, let's lead the discussion here and not be responsive to to things that have happened around us recently. Let's stand out above that we have an expectation that nobody will be bullied in our meetings. Nobody will be confronted with challenging statements that we're going to show our community the professional approach to things. And I do know there are many school committee members that hope for the same thing. So I want to acknowledge the work of the school committee as well. As we all know, the hours it takes to be an elected official in a community that provides a very small stipend is incredible. And having served on the school committee in the past, the hours they commit is just as significant as the hours we commit. So with that said, I'm only trying to set a tone here. Nothing wrong, absolutely nothing wrong with asking tough questions, but we ask in a polite and respectful way. And I know counselors know that, so I'm going to move on at this point and open it up for questions or comments for the superintendent or our staff. Counselor Ray.
Thank you for the opportunity, just as the City Council's representative to the school committee. I just wanted to thank the superintendent and his staff for the effort that it took to get to that so close to the 60 cents. We didn't quite get it, but close. And that's the real directive that we heard last week at the May fourth meeting was to get to that number. I think the use of fund balance is tough for the school committee at this point because we are trying to answer some of the good questions that counselors have asked about what happens in two years when the E-CUR funding goes away. What happens when you don't have that fund balance over and over again? And so I think as we move out of budget season, we're going to pick back up on policy meetings and install a fund balance policy so that we can be better prepared to absorb some of that shock in the future. I think the installation of our finance subcommittee and its work to do five-year planning has been really important, but it hasn't, it can't all get done in one year. So those folks got really up to speed this year, made some recommendations. We took some, we didn't take all of them, and that work needs to continue. I think the superintendent we have in place now has been in place for less than a year, but has done terrific work in trying to map out some of that for us as well. And so as we try to increase teacher pay to the 40K minimum, as the state has mandated, but not fully funded, as we try to keep our staff whole through tough situations, which was a decision the school committee made, and I stand by that vote and that decision. And as we work to get teachers back in the next year, hopefully in person, hopefully full capacity, even though the remote work and the dual remote work they've been doing has been incredible, I think we need to let them focus on that work. And so we've preserved the instructional supplies and the social-emotional learning points because I would much prefer a teacher spend their time just teaching instead of making copies of their supplies or spend their time building relationships with their students instead of chasing down something we haven't provided to them, a translation service or something like that. And so I continue to stand by this budget as it's written now, and I hope other folks will join me in that. It went through the school committee not unanimously this time, it was an eight-to-one vote. But I am really hopeful that this council will see fit to pass it on for the municipal referendum voters to decide next.
Hey, thank you. Not seen any other hands at this moment. Superintendent Langless. So even in your presentation on the relief funding, there were still a lot of positions in there. And I mean, and I recognize that you noted at least one section has your kind of testing the waters and evaluating that. But what about all the other ones? How could that be considered anything but just carrying the budget for another year or two?
Yeah, so those positions are new ads, if you will, and so they don't exist today. And I think it's really about our approach. I do think that those things are good to try and see if they work and see what the functionality of them are. And I think the reality is we have to be responsible taxpayers, and if those things are going to stick around, something else is going to have to be trimmed. But with the relief funds to float them for a couple of years to assess, to see if they work, I think it doesn't impact us in the pocket directly locally. I know that the relief funds are taxpayer dollars as well, so we want to be good stewards. But those other positions are, again, those are new, those are not existing that we've slid over that we would have to at least attempt to slide back later. It preserves the folks that are in positions now, aside from those.
All right, thank you. Counselor Jensen.
Superintendent Langless, looking at the E-CUR funded items. So all those are not going to be planned on being like recurring expenses. Those are all just for this year or two years at most. Am I right?
Yeah, good question. So the E-CUR funding that I'm referring to has a, right now, a two-year cycle for us as far as the end date. And so we are, we're trying to be very intentional, very deliberate that the relief funds are used as intended, but also so that we can, textbook is just one example I mentioned earlier. If we buy a new textbook, you know, next September, that will last longer than two years or should. And so the intention and the deliberate nature of this is to get all of those kinds of things that we can. And so we can plan for a cycle of replenishment and not have a cliff. You know, I know there's a lot of instructional supplies right now in relief funds, and that was in an effort to preserve current staff. But I do think that we can be deliberate and intentional with that. So we're not looking at a wave that hits us, you know, two years out. The items that we have put into those relief funds have been thought of in that way with a multi-year approach.
Okay, so all those positions that are on that list, are those being marked as like one-year, two-year position only?
Exactly. They're being marked as one or two-year, assess how they're going. And then if they're going well, I think it's upon us as a school department to figure out a way to afford them by trimming elsewhere. And if not, then it needs to step aside. But I want to measure the results of those to see if they're worth keeping around or not.
Okay, so there's a chance that you could go to taxpayers in two years and ask them to fund these positions or items.
I mean, I think projecting two years out, there's a lot of possibilities. But to your point, you know, I'm committed to our community and being fiscally responsible. So I don't intend to come back in two years with a massive ask. I intend on coming back in two years with the council and staff that I've worked with on that process to say, you know what, we've made some tough choices over the last two years, but we have the right programs that we've measured and vetted and know that they are fits. And that's what we're coming forward with.
Okay, I noticed there was like extended school year is on the list. So that's something we wouldn't be offering now if we didn't have the COVID funding. Is that correct?
We would aggressively seek out title funds to see if there's any reallocation available through state or federal dollars like we do every year. But without relief funds, two years out, if we didn't secure other funding through a grant or title, we would look up and not have the resources to have summer school or extended school day program.
It does make sense to use it. I think you're, you know, spot on there. My worry is just that when the funding runs out, you know, the program's either going to stop or I just, I get the logic of making cuts to pay for those in the future. But just looking historically, historically at the school committee's budget over the last 10 years, I don't think you guys are going to be able to make any cuts. I mean, if salaries, you know, go up with the cost of living and inflation as they should, then, you know, your budget's going to inch up that way. And I guess I'm very concerned about the community will be asked to cover a lot of this in future years.
Yeah, I think that's the work that we have before us, and we've already had layers of those conversations with relief and rotation and cycling through things. The other thing I would say is, you know, you make excellent points, and I'm not naive to it. I do not want to walk back here in two years and have some, hey, we spent this in relief funds two years ago, and I told you we were going to, and now I'm just asking to keep it all. I don't think that's rational. That's not fair to our city. I think we need to be better stewards than that. So that's the effort we'll make. And just from a philosophical standpoint, for other counselors who may have a similar question, from where I said I was looking hard at, if we can do Monday through Friday as well as we can, I'd rather sacrifice, you know, school in July, at least initially in a budget conversation, than Monday through Friday. And so that's, that was where I landed, you know, from a school year perspective.
Okay, that makes sense. And I do absolutely want to give you credit. A lot of the concerns I had about the fiscal cliff being exacerbated this year, you know, by you presenting this, this does help me quite a bit. And I still have some concerns, obviously, but it does help. So I guess going back to the previous year, because the cliff was really created in the previous budget, which you weren't, you know, the superintendent at the time, so I can't put that on you. I guess there were a lot of things that were added with money that wasn't recurring money, taxpayer dollars or funding from the state. It was, you know, that one-off funding, and there were a lot of things created. And so while we may be able to kind of counter the effects of the, you know, exacerbating the cliff this year, as it certainly seems like you put the work in to do, I'm still worried about the cliff, you know, being created last year. And a lot of that funding eventually, you know, is a big part of this. I mean, the COVID relief funding runs out, and you guys can't rely on carryover funding as much. I'm just really worried that that's when the bomb is going to go off. And so if people think these cuts are either made now or never made, I'm just, I want school staff to know that I'm pretty convinced that if we don't take action now, some massive cuts are going to have to be made in two years because there is still a fiscal cliff. And so I guess what I'm hoping to see from the school department is at least, if we can't resolve the cliff this year in the budget, then at least come with a plan to alleviate it over a two-year period or even a one-year period. That's something that I would really look for. So yeah, I'm letting a lot of this kind of go around in my head and think about it. But I really appreciate the work you've done in this and the presentation. So those are my questions for now. Thanks.
Yeah, and Counselor Jensen, you make some points that we do have challenging financial waters ahead of us. But I also feel like there's things that we can do internally that we can get better with. And one of the things that I want to do, or make sure we're doing as superintendent, and I know Karen would echo this, is measuring our programs to see what's working and making decisions based on data and not just wanting to add.
And you may not have this information on the tip of your tongue, but how many unbudgeted positions have been added, you know, both last year and this year over the year?
Yeah, yeah, no, it's one of the things that I looked at, and I know it was a conversation that had come up. And again, thank you for sharing some questions that might be considered. My quick count, and remember, I was not superintendent last year, but my quick count was seven and a half unbudgeted positions have been approved. Of those seven and a half, there's really eight and a half, in my opinion, but one of those positions was funded with existing funds and not filling another position, so kind of a movement of money. But seven and a half, seven and a half. And so that's a practice that we have to, we have to find a way to get better at, I believe.
All right, good. Thank you. And I was pleased that you had that, so thank you very much. Counselor Pettigale.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just to kind of echo the sentiments of the mayor and Counselor Jensen. You know, every budget season, you know, the budget gets presented and it's continued increases, you know, year over year. You know, and you, Mr. Superintendent, I know that you're saying that, you know, you're going to reduce it next year or you're going to reduce it two years from now. But you're not able to do it now. You know, my fears are the same as the fears as Counselor Jensen and a lot, a lot of, you know, the residents of the city that I've talked to. And that it's not going to happen. We're going to have the additions this year, the additions next year, the additions the year after that, just like we had the additions last year when the budget still increased, but there was no increase to the taxes. You know, your comments make me feel comfortable that you would have those tough conversations. So I feel comfortable in that. But those tough decisions have to start happening now. They have to start happening this year. People can't continue to wait for that. People can't, can't continue to, to wait for that. You know, next, next year, I really truly hope, and I'm, I'm a councillor from day one, my first term, the very first thing that I put on our council agenda was a great working relationship with the school committee because it's so invaluable to our community to have that, that partnership with, you know, both halves of, of the city. But I, I really hope that the school department comes forward with a plan. You know, it presents a working plan with actionable objectives for where we want to go, you know, with, with this partnership with the city and what that future looks like. Yeah, just, just to, to kind of put it out there, you know, the, the cliff, you know, that we're exacerbating and is rapidly approaching as we continue to keep adding to this budget year over year without, without doing anything to, to change that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Councilor Jalinas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a comment. I, I want to say thank you. I appreciate the fiscal responsibility, Superintendent Langley, that you, your team took and, and you know, responding to the May 4th directive and, and really putting the effort into this. I also appreciate the breakdown that you provided regarding the E-Serve funds and how they're going to be utilized. I think I'm feeling reassured just based on the comments that you made acknowledging that, you know, there are challenging financial waters ahead, like you said, and there, there needs to be a deeper dive into fund balance policy, those kinds of things. And I think that, you know, I would just echo councillor Pettigale and say, you know, I think the sooner we can get on that, the better. But my biggest point is just a point of gratitude, like I said, for the fiscal responsibility that you took and, and responding. So thank you.
Good. Thank you. Counselor Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Superintendent, I've got to say that what you've said tonight is somewhat reassuring. The only problem is you don't have control over the final product. If we, we have your promises, we have your view for the future, but unfortunately, that's not binding. I am concerned that we're in a cycle now, much like if I were to have to go to the bank every month to pay a water bill or a fuel bill or something like that, I need money to, to pay my bills this month. And that's where I see it. I have not talked with anybody since the last meeting that has been in favor of the way the school department has been spending over the last several years. I've heard some, some really sharp comments from people in that regard. And it has to do basically with the fact that they think they're getting priced out of the city of Lewiston. And I hate to see that happen. I started and ran for council based on the premise that Lewiston could be a great place. And I still think that's possible. But I do think that fiscal responsibility is going to take a very huge priority if we're going to accomplish that. Like I say, I, I feel somewhat assured in what you've had to say tonight. I'm not sure, but what we're doing here is playing a bit of a shell game. And I, I'm just not into that. For that reason, I, I'm still, I'm still debating in my mind how this is going to play out for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or, yes, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Counselor Clement, I, I, I hear your, your words loud and clear, and I think that, you know, it's the work as other councils have mentioned that we need to do. And I, I, I'm not going to make empty promises. I'm not going to give you dollar amounts or say that there'll never be increases, but I will say that I'm going to get after the, the fiscal responsibility of our institution and, and make sure we work with city on that.
Okay, any other questions at this time for questions or comments from city councillors? All right, we'll move to a, a public comment period. So some ground rules here as well. We have a lot of people in our attendee list, so public comments will be limited to two minutes. And I'd ask staff to track that for me and interrupt when the two-minute mark hits. Also, anyone who speaks this evening, whether you're an elected official, a community member, a citizen, or an employee of Lewiston Public Schools or the city, you must indicate if you're a resident of Lewiston or not, so that we know when a citizen is talking to us. And that expectation will be required. So with that said, I'll go, I have one hand shown so far. School member Ron Potman, if we could bring him in, please. Okay, good evening, committee member Potman. The floor is yours.
All righty, just hearing the comments recently, I just want to add a few items to it that I, I think will help the council move forward a little bit. And that is that, you know, all of these financial, when we started two years ago, we got the snapshot of what was happening. And we had discussions on, on what to do moving forward, what was a priority, how to get there. And then, of course, we lost our superintendent and COVID hit. So everything hit, hit the rocky road, and there was good ideas that just kind of floated out there moving forward while we still had to operate a, a full school system, second largest. So with Jake on board and the creation of the assistant superintendent to assist him moving forward, there were a lot of things that went into play. Mr. Mayor, you alluded to the eight new positions that were added. Those specifically were big gaps that were causing operational dysfunction. Call it administration, call it finance, call it facilities. There was, there were major issues that were not getting addressed because the lack of the ability for them to operate at the level they should be operating at. And of course, not having a superintendent for a while put us behind. So that effort was to, we really had a vehicle almost driving with no tires down the road. And, and our effort was to try to put the tires on the road so we could move this vehicle forward. That being said, once we had the personnel in place, we then took a look at other issues that were brought up in the past. And of, of course, a couple we had no choice over, the, the large mandate from the state, almost a million dollars in raising the teacher salaries. The settlement with the federal government in terms of the LL at 1.2 million dollars. These, these are large ticket items. I mean, any, any school system would, would, would have a difficulty with. That being said, moving forward with that, as Chair of the Finance Committee, we've purposely talked about-
Mr. Potman, you're hitting the two-minute mark, so if you could run up-
I'll just, I'll just wrap it up. I, I just wish I could have an extra minute here. As Chair of the Finance Committee, we've, we are addressing the cliff. The, a whole point of keeping a million dollars in the, in the fund balance was a beginning of addressing that cliff. We are already addressing how we exit, the exit strategy through the COVID funding on, on where we can place things in the next two years. We've talked about the special ed audit, which of course was lost in the weeds because we lost our superintendent. We've got that going. We have addressed also the outplacement, which is a multimillion-dollar piece, and the savings we could do in doing things differently. So, and, and also the long-term CIP effort. So there are at least five efforts in the Finance Committee that's addressing the very concerns that you all have. It's not lost with us. We know the concerns are there. Certainly, I can see it. I've, I've introduced it to, to the whole committee, and we're moving forward with it. So it, where I'm, I'm very optimistic that we're going to be able to have good, decent answers next year in addressing a lot of these issues. So it's not a, it's not a bleak picture at all. So, thank you.
So I think you got that extra minute and
Thank you.
And, but I, and I realize I have, I'm not seeing any other hands at this point in attendees, so I didn't want to cut you off hard, hard. I'll, I, I will share this, committee member Potman, that, you, you know, you spoke of those positions, and I think you justified your thoughts on them. But unbudgeted positions have been happening at, at unacceptable level at the school department for years. And no staff member in front of us this evening is responsible for that. It's just, it's a pattern. And so I was really happy to hear Superintendent Langless address that with the council. Okay, Sarah Gillespie, if we could bring her in. Ms. Gillespie, if you could introduce yourself and just state what community you reside in, please.
Sure. Can you all hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Okay. My name's Sarah Gillespie. I am a citizen of Lewiston in Ward III. And I am the parent of a preschooler, and I'm not in Lewiston Public Schools yet. But I want to be, and I want to be proud that my son will go there. And I watch friends of mine with similar age children or older send their kids to charter schools or to schools out of Lewiston or out of Andrus Goggin County because they want their kids to go to a quote-unquote "good" school. And I just want our city to really prioritize education because this is a long-term solution to some of our problems of poverty and systemic racism and injustice of all kinds. And I think that without really supporting our school committee and the public schools right now and investing in them for the future, we're never going to get to the goals of being the city that we want to be. And that's the place I want to live. And I'm a newer resident, but this is the place I call home, and I want to keep calling it home. And I want my son and everyone else to have the best education possible. And I know that that is possible. And so I would just really want to encourage the council to really support this budget.
All right, thank you. Jason LaVoy.
Yes, hello. My name is Jason LaVoy. I live at 125 Pine Street in Lewiston. I'm a big supporter of this budget. I believe this, the school committee has worked very hard in crafting a budget that you guys have responded to. My biggest concern with the budget, it has to do with the state. The state requiring teachers be made, be paid, I think it's thirty-seven, a little over thirty-seven thousand this year and forty thousand dollars next year. That's one thing we're going to have to overcome as a community. And I was just wondering if any councillors or school committee members have reached out to our state representatives to try to get any kind of funding from the state for that, because that would be very helpful in our budget discussions. But I'm a big supporter of this budget. I don't believe our education, uh, education community should go unfunded. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee member Bruce Damon. Good evening.
There, can you hear me now?
I, we can. Thank you, Bruce. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to echo some of what's been said by, by member Potman. We've worked long and hard here to try to create what we think is a sustainable budget. There's many, many issues that the school department has. The unfunded mandate for the increased salaries for all teachers is one of them. That has an impact when we look at the teacher's budget, the teacher's contract bargaining unit agreement. That increase at the very bottom has a trickle-up effect that is significant. When we look, it's not just the very lowest tier that is affected by that. So some of these decisions that are being made for us at Augusta that are not really being funded become a real challenge. And I think that we've, we've really worked hard to try to mitigate as much of that as we can. We're heading into a new three-year contract agreement with the teachers' union. And we've already had a couple of other discussions as from a negotiations committee standing. I know that Mayor Care has been involved with negotiations and understands how difficult that can be. So we're working hard to try to contain that to the best of our ability. The, the school board, the school committee has worked long and hard to try, to try to get to a place that we feel is defensible, sustainable, and responsible. And I hope that we can get this budget adopted here. We are, we were very fortunate last, in the last election cycle that we got the expansion of the high school approved overwhelmingly by the, by the citizenry in Lewiston. That's having an impact on where we're at today. That forty cents is one of those things that we have to deal with. But that was previously approved. Now we're looking at trying to move forward. We have the advantage of the CARE funds and the ESR funds, and we're making the best we can of that. I know the city has those funds available too in some, in some areas. And they're trying the best they can do with it. So I think that the citizens need to know that their, their voices are being heard, and they're being heard at both levels. And that we're working, which we're trying to work together to make sure that we do not so in, so drastically impact any of the citizenry here, that people are forced either to leave their homes or to go without. So we, we hear you. We're working towards it, and we're hoping that you will also support our LCIP request as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, committee member Damon. All right, seeing no other hands raised in the attendees, I will bring it back before the council. Councillor Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just so we can add a little local color to this, I had an interesting conversation yesterday with a long-term, a long-time resident of the city. This person told me, I'm scared. I am really scared of the position we find ourselves in. I look at what's happening to the city, and I'm so afraid that we're going to go down. That was the term that was used, that we're going to go down, and we'll have no ability to be able to save the city. This is a place that I've called home, my parents called home. And this person went on, and literally, I'm, I'm convinced the person was afraid of where we're headed. I have concerns as well. I think I voiced those concerns. I have confidence in Superintendent Langless. I've had conversations with him. I think he means well. I hope he's able to pull it off. I hope that he's treated better than some of his predecessors have been. I hope that the school committee will work diligently with him. And I would like nothing better than to see the Lewiston school system be one of the best in the state. But it has to be in a manner in which the people that fund it can afford to fund it. We keep losing people from the city. You know, the people that remain are going to be paying more and more, and more and more people, we're going to be like California or New York. People are going to be flooding out of Lewiston to some other place in the state. I just don't want to see that happen. So I do believe that we can work together. I, I, my fervent hope and prayer is that we can pull it off. Because I just don't want to see us have a repetition of this next year. Yeah, I, I just don't know. I, I wish I could reach out in the future and predict what was going to happen. Then people could come to me, and I could command great sums of money for being able to tell them what was going to happen. Unfortunately, I can't do that. I don't think there's anybody in this room that can. But with a concerted effort on the part of all people and keeping in mind those folks that we work for, because we truly do work for the people that pay the taxes, be they relief funds spread out across the whole, whole United States, or be it the local tax coffers. And we have to be responsive to the people that pay the bills. And I hope that we can head in that direction and make a habit of it and not play a shell game in the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Pettigale.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I was kind of listening to, not kind of, I was listening to committee member Potman speak. And it, it got me thinking. I, I, I think it would be a fantastic idea, you know, next year, this year, if it's possible. You know, again, that's something I brought up in the past, but for the, the school committee as a body and the city council meet regularly. Not for checkups, but it's so that way both sides know where the other one is. A lot of times on the council here, I've never served on the, on the school committee, but a lot of times on the council- it's just the budget and then it's, you know, whatever you happen to hear in, in the paper, um, or whatever you happen to hear from a constituent that's going on in the schools. We don't know what the plans are. It's just, here's the cost, this is what it is. If people like it, they tell us. If people don't like it, they tell us. I, I, I never thought I would, I would see the day, um, that the community doesn't support the schools. And every person that I've talked to is having a real hard time with this budget. You know, and even, even with the, the vote that was reached last week, it's, it's just moving, moving stuff around. It's not, not reducing any of the costs there. You know, and again, this is the best counsel, in my opinion, ever in the city. Um, and I don't say that just because the, the budget got voted down last week, but I say that because real conversations are happening up here. Things are not being glossed over and just being rubber stamped. So if, you know, this, if, if you want a, a partnership, and I know, I know deep down that you do, and it speaks volumes for the amount of school committee members that have spoken tonight, um, you know, superintendent, you, you are in a tough place, you know, between a, a rock and a hard place and a dumpster fire. I don't, I don't envy you where you're at, at all. Those are, those are my thoughts.
Hey, thank you, Counselor Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yeah, first I do want to give thanks to, um, school committee members, uh, Potvin and Damon. Um, I sincerely hear, you know, I sincerely appreciate hearing about efforts to create a plan to address that fiscal cliff. Um, and so I, I wholeheartedly am glad that those are happening. It's not enough to say during public comment period, though, during our second vote on the budget, that that's what's going on and that that's gonna alleviate my concerns. We've had the entire budget process. Um, I wasn't made aware of that. We've brought up these, I've talked about these concerns in public several times about the cliff. And I'm only now hearing that this work being done, not a plan, is work being done. So I'm, I'm very happy that you guys are moving in that direction. It should have been done a long time ago at the beginning of this budget process, not after we voted down a budget once. And I shouldn't have to hear about it during the meeting. So again, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to take away from the work you guys are doing because you're doing good work. You're headed in the right direction. That's what needs to happen. You need a plan. But again, saying it now is not enough to, to, to make me comfortable to vote for the budget, um, on those concerns. When we look at the, I mean, like the last decade or so of the city budget and the school budget early from the Great Recession, it tended to be a pattern of the school has these mandates that come down on it that, um, the school district really has no choice but to meet. Whether it's expanding schools, um, you know, paying for certain things. It's unfortunate that's happened. And when that happens, the city has had to make sacrifices every single year, every single year. So i- it's not fair to say that we in the council don't like teachers and we don't like school staff members as much as it would be unfair of us to say that you guys don't like firefighters, you don't like cops, you don't like, like plow truck drivers. I don't want to get into that argument there because I don't think it's a really, you know, it's not productive. But we just got to realize that, like, my three years on the school committee during the budget, the city, you know, tried to make it clear during, you know, using a lot of data that the city has lost a lot in order for the school committee to get what it needs, to meet these mandates from the state. And so I didn't realize just how much the city side sacrifices year after year. As a school committee member, I just did not know, and I can tell you from serving on the council for a year and a half now, um, a lot of those, those losses that the cities had to take so that the schools could, could get what they need have been devastating for the city and have kept growth from happening. And, um, it's all these problems in Lewiston, they're external. They're not internal. All these problems are coming to Lewiston, um, you know, from away and we just have to deal with them. And the system is just not sustainable. And I've talked before about how there's just no money at the municipal level to make up for what society expects out of schooling. And so we as a society really need to shift our funding probably more from the federal level here. Um, and I get that that doesn't help this situation at all and I'm, I'm a little sorry for bringing it up, but um, until we actually do that, this cycle is just gonna keep happening year after year after year. Um, and I want to break that cycle. So just knowing that the city's constantly had to make up, you know, every, every time, um, and that's just not sacrifices on the city side. It's also increases to the, the city, um, taxes. And when, you know, it's, it's okay to look at one year and say, okay, taxes are going up by three hundred, four hundred dollars. But what happens is again the next year and again the next year and again the next year. Maybe it's a year break, then it happens the year after that. Taxpayers are worried. They have no, no, nothing in sight that that's not gonna happen to them again year after year. And so I want to make sure that we can, you know, limit these increases to taxpayers. I do want to make clear that I'm not opposed to raising taxes for education. I'm a teacher. I fully believe in funding education as much as we should. I'm just aware that we can't fund it the way we want to using municipal dollars. It's just not enough and the impacts that are gonna come from other parts of the city are gonna be absolutely devastating. It's a whole city we're funding here, not, not just the school department, unfortunately. So I, I do have a lot of concerns. I know some comments were made about the revaluation. To be honest, when the city has to make cuts year after year, so that the school can get a little bit extra to get what they need to, to make up for these mandates by the state. I'll be honest, one of the things that is, um, politically unpopular comes with a six-figure salary that is so easy to cut has been revaluation. So a big reason we haven't done revaluation is because we've had to make up those expenses for other things, including the school department. It's, it's just, it's not fair to, to go after the city council for not pushing revaluation when, I mean, we probably haven't done it because we haven't had the funding because we keep taking it out so that we can pay for other things that need to happen, including the school system. And I hope the school committee does realize that. So it, it stinks because, I mean, just looking at it, you know, as a teacher myself, being on a school committee, now being on a city council, it's, it's almost evil the way society's treating schools because there are wants and needs and as a teacher, we can list a lot of the needs and things that, that are absolutely needed to make education function. But from a societal perspective, from the money that's actually available, those things kind of almost get downgraded to wants. And then we as teachers usually just have to spend our own money on things. We don't get the support we need in the classroom. And we just get completely stressed out, like, all the time. So it's unfortunate, but like in Lewiston, the needs have really been these mandates from the state our growing student population over several years that we just had to make up for. And we as a community had to decide how much money do we have that we can actually spend on this? What are our priorities? Even the things that teachers and, and staff members would consider needs had to be made into wants. And unfortunately, we're just not in a position as a city to, to really change that. It stinks to say. We can't simultaneously admit that we're a, a poor city, a city that has a lot of poverty and simultaneously say that we can fund education as much as we want. It's just the cold truth. And for like the students, you know, when they're outside of school, um, I worry about the safety of the kids downtown and I don't think the downtown is getting better. I think we have a lot of work we need to do and we're not able to do that work because we don't have the funding to do it. And I can tell you the budget process this year was really, really difficult. Knowing that there are things we could have done that could really, really help improve the city, maybe it's just a better quality of life for a lot of people, for a lot of the kids in our community. And we just weren't able to do that. I'm glad we have an rec department going, but again, rec's taken a lot of hits because we've had to make sacrifices to the school side. So there's a lot to it. I've, I've covered most of what I wanted to say. Again, I, I'm really happy to see that a lot of the, the fiscal cliff, you know, I don't say it's being created, it was created last year, it's being exacerbated this year. And I have a lot more, um, a lot less concerns after seeing what was presented tonight. And I have full faith in Superintendent Langless, um, Assistant Superintendent Paquette, I have full faith in the administration. I, I, it was an honor to work with you guys when I was on the school committee. So I hope you know that. Just from the school committee side, I do want to praise Tanya Whitlow as well. She is extremely professional. She made it clear that she disagreed with us. But, um, did it in a very professional way and, um, honestly, I have, I had a ton of respect for her before. I have even more now. So I, I do worry that if, if I don't think this is gonna pass voters, if we send it to voters and they knock it down, it does hurt the faith in the system. It does people, make people less confident in Lewiston as a city. Just a few years ago, we had a school committee budget that was voted down. And I was, I was on the school committee at the time. I voted for it. I thought it was a very reasonable budget. This community didn't. And so if that would get voted down, I have very, very big concerns that a budget like this, which doesn't prepare us well for the future, um, I just don't think it would pass. And if it doesn't pass, it's just gonna hurt the process all along. It's gonna waste a lot of people's time. It's gonna waste money holding an election. And the end of the day, people are gonna have less, less faith in Lewiston. And any plans that we can kind of work on now and, and wait till later? This is an election year. All of us in the council could be gone. All of you guys in the school committee could be gone. I think it was two thousand and seven where the entire city council was, was voted out of office and replaced the entire council. So it's entirely possible. So we've got to make sure people keep faith in the city. I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna go in depth onto the, the sacrifices that the city has made, but I have, if you think I'm overstepping it, I, I haven't talked enough about it. It's just, there's so many things that we could be doing in the city that the cities had to make cuts on and we just can't keep doing this year after year. Um, so the school district needs to do what we've done in years past and, and I really hope prioritize the, the, the needs and look at some of those needs and recognize that they have to be wants, as awful as that is. So I, until I see a, a solid plan in place to address that fiscal cliff that was created last year, I can't support the budget. Um, it's just gonna create a time bomb that is gonna blow up for the district in two years when a lot of staff will have to be fired then, or possibly programs cut. We need to, we need to deal with this now. So those are my comments for tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I just want to add a couple of things to your comments, you know, you, Counselor Jensen spoke about, you know, city and school raising taxes year after year and having a break one year and then here we go on that same pattern. But I think the concern with the community is they look at the city and they're not seeing that their roads are plowed any better. Uh, but their taxes are increasing. They look at the school and, and they're not seeing graduation rates rise, but they're seeing their taxes increase. And that's why it's incumbent upon both city and school to have measurable outcomes that we can share with the community as, as, uh, budget increases, uh, happen. And then finally, he spoke about the assessment, uh, and some of the reasons why the city has not done that yet. I won't get into that, but I want to acknowledge that this council is the first council in several years that is taking that on uh, head-on and, and starting to put, uh, monies in place to address the lack of a current assessment. Counselor Ray, you had your hand raised. Did you change your mind?
I'd like to wait if that's possible.
No, I'd rather, let's, you were in line first. Nobody gets last dibs here. So I'd ask that you go ahead with any comments you may have.
Sure, uh, trying to gather my patience here. So, um, I sound a bit terse, that is why. Um, so I represent Ward Three. Uh, we heard from a, a citizen from Ward Three today and, um, I hear from them in my outreach. And it can, Ward Three, for those who don't know, contains two of the poorest census tracts in this state. The whole state, not just the city, the state of Maine. And these are folks who need public education. I am a firm believer that education lifts folks out of poverty and gives them the tools that they need to be successful in the workplace or in further education, if that's what they so choose to pursue. And that is what is going to make this community strong. And that is what I hear when I talk to constituents of my ward. I, of course, agree that we have, we do have to prepare for the future. Our revaluation will not be complete until fiscal year twenty-six is my understanding. Which, I, I just am curious if folks think we have to standard the thirty-dollar mark for the next five fiscal years. When that number doesn't make a lot of sense based on the fact that it's decades-old valuations and our real number will be closer to twenty-four dollars. And so that's the first part that struck me in this conversation, that we're using this number that seems pretty arbitrary to me. And, you know, next year, as we look at contractual obligations, the following year, taxes do go up. We have very strong labor unions working with both the city and the school department, and I am proud of that. I think it's incredible that we have workers who are protected by organizing and make a wage where they can live off of it for the most part. I think that's admirable, admirable of the city. And I think even further, the school department keeping folks whole over the past year was a great step. Uh, I know we've been criticized for preserving stipends when those were budgeted in people's lives. And that's, even though it's five thousand, thousand dollars here and there, or sometimes a little bit less for stipends, that's, you can't apply for unemployment for that. You can't get other benefits to help make up that money that you were depending on. And so I, I remain proud of that as well. I think we'll know a bit more in a year or two, uh, especially about the CMP project or other similar projects that come online and do help relieve some of that residential tax burden. And that might tide us over until the revaluation can happen. I'm hopeful for that, but I'm under no illusions that that's a popular opinion or, um, that it will entirely succeed. We don't know. I am struck by the number of unbudgeted positions over time and the number of vacant positions over time. And for context, when we look at the, from the city side, it's about three hundred and fifty employees who are paid through the general fund. When we look at the school department, it's much more like a thousand folks, so three times the number. And so there are positions were mandated to have by law. If there's an IEP position for special education, we have to hold those positions open, fill them with subs. And so it inflates the number no matter what. Eight point five unbudgeted positions, not music to my ears. I would love if we could have more predictability year over year. But I think when you go through superintendent transitions, of which we've had two now, on the school's department side of things, you have to adjust to what the vision of that superintendent is. And it's really awkward, um, for folks who haven't experienced this to have a superintendent or a member of their leadership team say, this is a position we need and to shoot it down. I think when you all criticize the relationships with the superintendents, we are trying to be supportive and that's why those positions have gone into place because we were told they were needed. I think this superintendent has heard the reaction to that and I trust him, you all seem to trust him. I know you don't trust other folks in both of the school departments, such as the school committee sometimes, but, um, I think that number will come down over time. We're gonna have, continue to have those contractual obligations year after year. And I think we just have to keep trying to do our best for every student. And that student population has changed for the past ten years. We went from a very high special edu- education population to an influx of ELL learners. We now are getting our ELL staffing and curriculum up to speed with special education. Special education is mandated through state law and does get a, additional allocation. So does ELL, but not in the same way. And it hasn't garnered the same support. And some of that is rooted in systems and inequities that exist there. But we now have to bring them up to speed and make sure that ELL department has what they need to do their job and do it effectively. And I think that will make an impact on graduation rates for sure. I also just need to reflect on folks commenting on the relationship with the school committee. I don't think group meetings fix that. I think connecting one-on-one or attending the meetings would. I, this is my, I've done four municipal budgets now. This is my fourth school committee budget and I have never seen this disjointedness that has been happening this year. I, I think we're all very, it, we're in a unique circumstance last year while we were doing this budget and trying to make these decisions in our little Zoom boxes. There was a lot of pressure to just get it done and uncertainty about how long it would go on for. We've been in this for over a year now and it's uncomfortable, but I come to every city council meeting and I deliver the news from school committee and I go to every school committee meeting and deliver the news from city council. And to say that you don't know what's going on is frankly insulting to me and how much time I've spent doing this work. I'm running out of steam here, but I think if you want to improve the relationship with the school committee, then you gotta pick up the phone and, or send an email and build that relationship. I can't keep trying to do it for you because it doesn't seem like it's working. So that's incumbent upon all of you and I will make the same remarks to the school committee when I'm speaking to them next. And I tried to give them some recommendations for how to communicate with you all and work through some education about what is in the, in the budget and what isn't. I, again, it's, it's not perfect and I can understand folks not feeling comfortable and they want to see plans. I think we should take it to heart when the superintendent, when two members of the school committee are here making that case and saying, we are working on the plan. You gotta give us time. Um, I think if a plan is what's needed to pass this budget, we are then putting that uncertainty onto our staff, saying, we don't know what funding we have for next year. And the more we push this out, the worse the outcome is going to be. It's not gonna be great if it goes to referendum and fails, of course not, but I think We need to trust the school administration who was hired and who has done nothing but prove themselves over. How long has it been, Jake? Almost a year now. I I'm putting my faith in them and I think they're great stewards and. Sure, the school committee doesn't take the recommendation, but we listen to it and we understand it, and then we vote our values, which I think is important for everyone to do tonight. My last thing, education is economic development. So if that's something you ran a platform on, I hope you wrote for this tonight.
All right. Well, I you know, I'm going to come to the defense of this council. This council war is worked hard for for a year and a half through a pandemic, and I think we've been inviting. To the school committee, and I'll leave it at that. Counselor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just just some few comments that I have ran down as I was listening in. First, I really appreciate the school committee and the superintendent for their great work. I have supported the initial. Budget of, you know, on May fourth, and I will continue to support this. I honestly believe that the voters of Lewiston would have. Supported the initial. You know, budget of of a dollar and something and because we need to continue funding our education and prioritizing our schools. Lewiston Public Schools are the best in the state. I graduated from Lewiston High School in twenty fourteen, and I'm a product of the great work. Our educators and our schools are doing. And. You know, another thing is that in terms of the new programs that, you know, is being referenced. We need like old position as well as new positions. We need. Any position that we can get to support our students, especially right now. We're not thinking about two years down the line. We're thinking about right now because. We are in a pandemic, we're in a crisis, and our students need more support, especially social emotional learning. So for us to. Try to cut that down, especially right now, it's just unacceptable. It's just not prioritizing our kids who really need the support. Another point is, you know, we are not. Cutting education means we're not really prioritizing our students in our schools. Biden, our president recently has raised the refugee cap, which will mean that we might get new students into. Our into our schools into into Lewiston. So how are we setting? The stage for our educators to support you these new students. We're not. So I really hope the council tonight supports the current budget unanimously. And yeah, just continue to to support our schools and our students because they are really our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Three points that I would like to make. First of all, one of these wasn't even on the radar until Counselor Ray spoke. But I feel that from my perspective. I am disappointed that our council rep has not been more neutral and detached and been more of a messenger. For the council in these matters, and I'll leave it at that, that I've been disappointed in in the way that our council rep. To the school committee has acted over this term. When it comes to a comment made earlier this evening, I'm not sure who had made it. I believe it was perhaps committee member Damon. Unfunded mandates are going to be the death of the state of Maine. I came back to Maine from a state where there were no unfunded mandates. That's the state of New Hampshire. And believe me, the legislature down there doesn't do anything unless they understand the fiscal impact on them. In Augusta, they just seem to pass this stuff off left and right. You gotta do this, you gotta do that. We have strong unions in the city. There's no doubt about that. If the effort is put forth by these unions to lobby their elected representatives at the state legislature. And tell them we don't want any more of these unfunded mandates. I mean, that that is where to put the effort right there. We've got to stop this kind of stuff. Mandates for salary mandates for this. Mandates, the city has got to buy flags for veterans' graves. I mean, there's no end to it. We got to put a stop to that, and then we're going to have start having some control over things at the local level. And finally, the responsibility for setting taxes falls squarely on the council. We're made to be the bad guys left and right. We're the ones that end up giving and giving and giving. It's been like that. I've been in government either county or municipal for forty five years plus now. And it's always the government side of things that seems to take the hit. I'm all for education, and I think we need to provide for education within our means. And I firmly believe that if each. Committee or group responsible for their area of governance had the ability to set taxes. Things would probably be a little bit better. We wouldn't see some of these huge increases. It's very easy to sit back and say, oh, we need this. We gotta have this. We gotta have that. And then pass it off to the people who have to make the hard decision. Mr. Mayor, I agree with what you've said. We've had quite a year. Quite a quite a term, actually. It started out well. Then the pandemic hit, and it's been almost chaos ever since. I would like to see us get out of that pattern. I want to see us develop that trust. Last year, the former Chair of your Finance Committee. And myself met with the business agent. I'm not sure I have the right title there from the school department. We had a very good conversation last of a couple of hours. And we developed. A relationship, I thought, and then the pandemic hit. We agreed that we should be meeting regularly with the school committee. I believe it was Counselor Petten Gill that just mentioned that. I'm all for it. I think communication is needed. You go back to the old movie Cool Hand Luke with the the venerable. Actor Paul Newman. What we have here is a failure to communicate. And that's what we have at this level many times. We need to communicate. We need to know what's going on. And the best way is for everybody to sit down at the same table. Everybody hears what the other side has to say at the same time. We don't hear it through the filter of somebody that's carrying messages. So in in that regard, I would love to see us get together with the school committee. And unfortunately, I still have not been able to justify. Holy in my mind, how I'm going to going to handle this tonight. I still have concerns. We'll we'll let it go at that, and hopefully I can resolve that. I I'm torn between two things right now. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It just first one to comment on the communication from the school committee. Yeah, I fully agree. It could be better on both of us, both of our sides. We could reach out. Like any, you know, person to person relationship interaction. It's always a two way street. I get it. We did have a workshop where we said pretty much what we've been saying all along. We haven't really changed our stances from the workshop with the school district. So to me, it kind of feels like we weren't really listened to. Again, maybe I maybe I could have reached out more and made it clear, but the only messages I got from school committee members weren't asking, hey, what do you think about this? What we what do you think of this? What are your recommendations for this? It was just asking me to support what they've done. So it wasn't really like a talk or a conversation. So much as the only communication I've gotten has been, hey, we're done. Support this, support this. And it's just not the way that I feel like we've done it in the past. I feel like as a school committee member, I was always very concerned to reach out to, you know, counselors, talk to people. I'm trying to get, okay, we're not going to get everything we want. What can we get? I just feel like it didn't happen this year. It didn't happen last year either, but again, there was the pandemic going on. It was just kind of a weird year, so I kind of wrote that off. But yeah, I just feel like no working together kind of more demands. And so again, but that might just come from from lack of experience. You know, a lot of people serving in office now are pretty new in their first terms, and you know, I get it. I get it. I was, you know, I was there my first year. I do also want to kind of point out the economic development argument only really works at a state level or really a national level. Because Lewiston has so many people like either leave or move into the city. That we really can't say the school district itself is, you know, what determines how how the economy is in the city or how successful people are. I mean, you think about the top ten of each class, how many of the top ten live in Lewiston? How many of the top ten live in Maine? I don't think anyone in my top ten lives in Maine. So I I get the economic argument. I just think it works at a national level and not a local level. So I do want to respectfully push back on Counselor Ray. As our council representative, you have six constituents, the six of us, and I'm not quite. I don't believe you've been representing our views properly during this budget process. I can give some examples there. I I don't feel like you've brought up fully like what we've talked about in our workshops. I mean, like even at the last. The the it just the meeting on Wednesday, the school committee meeting on Wednesday. You made. You tried to see comments from city counselors, but they really didn't come across as I think what we really believed. When you mentioned some comments that I made, you were reading through your notes. You said you couldn't read your notes. Then you said, no, I don't understand my notes. Counselor Jensen said he wants to raise taxes, wants to increase school funding, but also not raise taxes. And you just kind of moved on without discussing anything further. You've got to realize that that makes me look bad, you know? I I fully agree that we need to get taxes from the federal level. Because I want to increase school funding. You should probably double school funding if you ask me. But I don't feel like you said my comments in a way that really portrayed what I was saying. And it did feel like I took a hit for it, and I was not appreciative of it. You also mentioned about the revaluation and how you wanted to support it, and no one else in the council did when you brought it up. You didn't mention that we had a workshop on that previously when we talked about that. You didn't mention that it's not something we could just do with a snap of our fingers. It's going to take some time to do, you know, the the city assessors saying that. You didn't make clear the timeline of when it's actually possible, and as a result, the school committee, you know, made a lot of several members made comments about us not acting on the revaluation. Which to me, I'm afraid may have hurt public confidence in us. It's made it harder for me to be a good city counselor. So I I I'm very concerned that you're not representing our views the way you should. The charter doesn't say that we can't comment on school policy. We don't decide it, but it doesn't say we can't comment on it. Other communities do. They're very active about that. I held my tongue very much, especially over the the SRO. Situation that happened. I didn't agree with what the school committee did. I I highly disagree. I still disagree. I I would like to see that reversed personally, but I know it's not our decision. I bit my tongue in that. I held my tongue because I wanted to show you guys the respect as a school committee, if, you know, your decision on policy. And even as a counselor, where we do fund a third of that position, we honestly, as a council, could probably have had a say in that. But we chose to to let you guys do your thing and be respectful and not have you, you know, represent us in that way. And so. I feel like we've given you a lot of leeway and you're not representing our views, especially during this budget process, and I just. Like not angry, just extremely, extremely disappointed. Because it's making it harder for me to be a good city counselor. So I did want to respectfully push back on that and hope that things can change in the future.
Okay, thank you, Counselor LaJoy.
I thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I really don't know where to start. That's been an interesting hour and a half. A lot has been said, a lot of discussions, a lot of. A lot of comments that make a lot of sense on both sides. I can see where on the school side. We're moving forward. Not only for the school department, for the children specifically. And and you know, last week, the word passion was was put out there, and I I think there is passion on there. They're looking at. What is best for the for the children and so on. And and I I do think that they realized that there is a ceiling. That they should stay under. To justify their action and their thoughts. I I I. I enjoyed listening to the council members. quadrant and and. Damon, I thought, you know, they've made a lot of sense. I I I know Mr. Damon is a businessman. I know he looks at a perspective in a manner. That justifies his actions. He has to be careful as to how he sets his rates and so on for his customers, because eventually you won't have any. So, you know, we have good people on both sides. I think the the COVID situation. Really put more ingredients in the soup, if you will, to stir things up. I believe this evening I've been listening to all the conversations and both sides make quite a bit of sense. I do have my concerns. You know, with some of the actions on the school board side. But many of them have been answered tonight. And I commend Superintendent Langlois for everything he's done for the city. And taken over in such a manner to move the programs forward. Hopefully, and and I believe that that is happening as the school. Committee is working with him to move some of those, but it's just like anything else, Mr. Mayor. When we on the council have a discussion, sometimes we don't always agree. With each other, if you will, and or yourself agree with a comment that someone will will make. Let me see. I think Counselor Clemens and and Pet Gil and Jensen had very good comments. I believe Counselor Ray. Did well as far as I'm concerned when she came and and gave us information at the end of every meeting. There's just so much time that we have and just so much that you can say at that time. I don't believe. This. This arena, as we see this evening, is a place where. We. Make negative comments. Possibly against each other. I think. A protocol. As far as the way I was brought up and what I learned in the legislature. Is that if there is something like that to be addressed, it should be addressed within the committee itself. To set the situation straight. And possibly not in the public. I don't think I would like to be at the other end. Of the situation. So that that kind of concerns me. However, I have to understand as to what type of pressures we're under. And I hope that the citizenry. Understands the same same factor as well. As you stated, Mr. Mayor, we have been under great pressure for the past year and a half. And trying to come out of it within six months. I don't believe it's going to happen. However, we're going to keep trying till the very end. So I I guess that's my comments. As far as the the budget for the school department. I believe what should happen now. And and even though I I do have some questions and concerns, I I many of them were somewhat. Buffeted over that I feel more comfortable than I did when I came into the meeting this evening. And I will vote for the budget to go through. Because I think it's time that it goes to the citizens of Lewiston to have an opportunity to vote on that budget. And therefore, whatever comes out of that situation at that time, let's move forward. And and, you know, let's try to get along together and and move as a team for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ray.
I will try to keep it brief, knowing that I've already spoken a couple of times, but I did want to be responsive to folks. Who are disappointed in the way I've performed in my role. I have. Folks had two years of viewing my experience before voting to unanimously confirm me to the role this year. And I have always taken the approach that I will do my best to represent folks across the aisle, but I do retain my right to my opinion and my. As a member of the school committee, I will continue to do that as long as I am a member of the school committee and the council, and I know folks don't love that. I know. Mayor Bouchard didn't love that. We talked about it when I was appointed. I. Don't currently know Mayor Kair's opinion on that, but it's how I've performed this job for. Three and a half years now and how I plan to continue for that job. I do want to take a moment, Counselor Jensen. I really did not understand what you were trying to say, but. Felt bad that I had started a sentence and not finished it with saying what your opinion was. And, you know, my notes are pretty confusing on the subject. I think you've clarified that now that you would like the state to help us with this funding and the federal. Um, and you know, my notes are pretty confusing on the subject. I think you've clarified that now that you you would like the state to help us with this funding and the federal government to help us with this funding, which is currently happening with the with the ESR funds um and the other funds that are being allocated from the state and federal government. But I just, I think what we are not addressing is the plan, and I I hear that from folks here. And so um I will encourage my colleagues who were able to be here tonight to think about that. Um, I know Member Potvin, a member Damon who spoke, take that seriously, as do I. Um, I think future planning is going to be very important for the school department because there are some predictable things. We do know some of the uh contractual obligations year over year. We are working on a better LCIP with the facility subcommittee with Member Damon leading the charge there to have a better understanding of what those replacements look like. Um, we know what the debt service for the expansion of the high school will be year over year. So there are some others we can predict, and I think we should be. But again, it takes time and it's been a very hectic season. Um, I think voting for this budget tonight, again, to go back to the superintendent's main point is we we move ourselves forward in meeting the needs of our students, and that is the most important part um above the swipes that have been taken um that I hope do not continue above um the tax rate. I I think that is the headline of this all. We need to start better meeting the needs of more of our students. And we're not going to be a perfect school district next year. It even the following year, but I think, again, I go back to that trust that I have in Superintendent Langless and his administration to take the time to develop the programs, put in metrics for their success and understand what those are year over year and to make those decisions then not based on emotion. Um, I think it's easy to do that on the school committee and school department side of things. I know Counselor Johnson, Mayor Care, you've both experienced it, as have I. Um, it's really hard to be confronted with some of this stuff and have to make a kind of robotic decision to something that impacts students and educators' lives. Um, and so that is something that I think over time uh and a- as we move through the tenion uh the tenure of uh the superintendent's time with us, I think we're going to see that come to fruition in a way we have not been able to realize before. So I hope you all trust in him and his staff. Um, we have eighty attendees here tonight. Most of these folks are educators, as far as I can see scrolling through the list quickly. And I just, I I want that I want folks to know the reason why I'm fighting so hard for this budget is because of those educators who show up to all these school committee meetings and share their opinions, who are members of unions and pass along their um their sentiments to their government relations folks. And we we're in constant conversation with with the folks who work for us, and we're trying to do better for them so they can do better for the kids. Um, I I hope folks are convinced.
All right, thank you, Counselor Ted Gill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so it's more more just a a commentary. It's i- it is possible to support our schools, support our students, support our teachers, and support our community and not support the budget because it's not the same thing. All I'm going to say about that. I I am, I am glad, though, that all these conversations are happening now and that everything's come to a head. I've been advocating for years for us to move to a metrics-based system so that we can have practical conversations about these things and not have them based on emotions. Um, so that you can have real and and actionable conversations with us. Um, I I know for me, the reason that I I push these plans uh and and planning and future planning so much is that I've I've been in city council, serving the city since two thousand fifteen. I've served with some tremendously smart people. Um, and I've listened on more than one occasion when I was on the planning board about how when all these school projects came for uh approval and and lookovers, that all this stuff that we don't design schools for future needs. But when these schools break ground, they're already outdated, they're not big enough for the student body that is not even going to be in them for another year, another two years that it takes to to build these things. Um, that's why it's so important for us to do the or or for the the school committee and anybody else involved in these processes to do the work and and figure out what's going to happen. Um, because when we build a school and it's not big enough the day that the door is open, that's not meeting the needs of of the students that are there, not even in any that are going to be um in in future years. Um, you know, and then in my time on the council, I've seen school budgets come across that from uh the superintendent's predecessors. The math just did not make sense between um student needs and how they grew one year and then dropped off a cliff the next year. And then now, going back through, looking at it, all those students were magically still there. Um, you know, so having a real understanding on this and having an eye on the future does make valid sense. It we we can't, we can't continue to to pass the buck because we are leaving students behind, and it pinched us real bad when we did. You know, I again, it's I I've I've got to go with every single person that has talked to me and said they don't like us, they they do not feel that this meets the needs of our our current students and our our future students. I I can't, I can't support this as it is because no, no cuts have been been made, no, no adjustments have been made other than to just take the federal money. And Counselor Jensen hit it out of the park. Um, I don't know how he hit a double grand slam with the same hit. But he's he's absolutely right. What society expects out of out of our schools and for our students just is not possible. Our 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 teachers are rock stars, and they do need to be paid like rock stars. But these unfunded mandates are gonna are gonna kill us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Counselor Wright.
So um following the vote, uh if it passes, we'll then vote on a date for the referendum, is that correct? And then
That's agenda item number two, yes.
Okay, and if the vote fails, is there an opportunity to discuss further what message needs to be relayed to the school committee? Or will we just forego item number two and?
Uh, most probably, well, so I don't know, we'll talk uh with administration once we take this vote uh because it'll be mute if it passes at this point, and we'll go right to the gender item number two.
Great.
Thank you. Uh, Superintendent Langless.
If I could, just real quickly, um, I know some things have been mentioned about ceiling and and burden on the community. Um, and I'm not um by any stretch naive to how other funding is being used to try to leverage uh supports for students, and I I think that everybody is aware of that. Um, the the difference in the additional local allocation in this current proposal against FY twenty, uh and I know last year was an anomaly, but FY twenty is a four hundred thousand dollar reduction. And I know that we're leveraging federal dollars and relief funds to get there, and I think we can correct this over the next couple of years. Uh, but but the current tax burden is a four hundred thousand dollar reduction from FY twenty.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. All right, uh, any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Counselor from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
No.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yeah, yes.
Word five?
No.
Word six?
No.
And word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of four to three.
All right, thank you. Agenda item number two, please.
Item number two, approval of the election warrant calling for a special municipal election to be held on Tuesday, May twenty fifth, two thousand twenty one for the school budget validation referendum and recommendations from the city clerk register our voters on actions necessary to conduct said election. Requested action, be it ordered by the city council that the election warrant be issued for the special municipal election to be held on Tuesday, May twenty fifth, two thousand twenty one, for the purpose of voting for the school budget validation referendum and to approve the following recommendations from the city clerk register our voters on actions necessary to conduct the special municipal election. A, that the hours for acceptance of registrations in person only prior to the May twenty fifth election as required by main revised statutes annotated title twenty one A be set at eight thirty AM to four PM, May fifth through May twenty fourth. B, that the names of those who register during the closed session for registration shall be recorded in accordance with main revised statutes annotated title twenty one A. C, pursuant to title twenty one A, absentee ballots will be processed at the polling place at eight AM, seven PM, and any and all remaining shall be processed at eight PM if necessary. And D, to appoint the city clerk as the city's election warden and the senior assistant city clerk as the city's ward clerk for the May twenty fifth election.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motioned by Counselor Clement, seconded by Counselor Julynas. Questions or comments from the council? Counselor Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to check and ask, um, I assume there aren't any any events starting at the Coliseum quite yet, but just given our um issue a couple of years ago, want to check on that.
Sure, um, we will confirm with them again, but they are well aware of our elections and have been very supportive of allowing us to use the parking lot, so we'll confirm again.
Thank you so much, Kathy.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Cole.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just double checking Kathy. Will it be from eight AM to eight PM?
Uh, actually, it'd be seven AM to eight PM. Our polls are always open for thirteen hours for the residents.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? To the public? And we're now on agenda item number two, which is on the voting, so well, I saw our hand up, but that went away. All right, counsel, back to the council, Counselor Clement.
Just quickly, uh, voting at the clerk's office uh prior to the day.
Yes, we'll start tomorrow morning at eight thirty, counselor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Counselor from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
And word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. All right, so that ends our special uh council meeting. We'll be moving to a uh workshop session. Uh, anyone need a break before we do that? Okay, I'm seeing several heads nod, so let's take five minutes or until the mayor gets back.
Any assurance he's coming back?
Yeah. All right, once we get everyone back, we'll start the meeting. All right, uh, so we'll move to workshop session A, proposal for consideration to vacate. All right, so we'll move to workshop session A proposal for consideration to vacate an accepted portion of Holland Street. Good evening, Dave. I think most probably you'll be taking it, taking the lead here.
I think so. Thank you, folks. So, yeah, we're talking about Holland Street vacating an unaccepted portion of Holland Street. You may recall the planning board and you folks had some involvement with a approval of a multifamily down where Pile and Lumber used to be located. Saxon Development, Multifamily Development. As part of that project and their title work, they discovered that there's an unacceptable section of Holland Street that runs on the northern side of the lot. In your application, you'll see a couple maps, both exhibits. Or excuse me, attachments. One, if you look all the way to the right side of that plan, there is a hatched area. That represents a portion of Holland Street. Attachment two is a copy of a touch map that shows a number of streets on it. And you'll see Holland Street is kind of highlighted, and then it's just two lines that go to the river. It's those two lines to the river that we're talking about. In order to vacate a paper street, there are public and private rights in a paper street. Public rights are those owned by the city. Private rights are those maybe of lot holders and lot holders in the subdivision. There's a legal process that needs to be followed in order to vacate a street. Driven both by state statute and by city policy. So you have a copy of that policy in your packets. We've followed that policy at this point as far as getting a recommendation from the planning board to vacate this section of Holland Street. The next action would be upon, you know, after this workshop this evening is that we would post an ad in the paper. Excuse me, not in the paper, but to all these lot owners in that subdivision. You have a copy of that in your package as well. We worked with the city attorney to identify all the property owners and the mortgagees. We actually have to notify the mortgagees of those lots as well of this process. The council would then act upon this at a public hearing. After which the the public rights would be extinguished at that point, but there would still be private rights presumably by all of these lot owners that are in this order here. And they have basically a year to claim any rights into this unacceptable portion of Holland Street. There's been a handful of these that have been done over the years in my tenure that you folks have seen. Not once has anybody ever claimed any interest or rights to these. So typically what will happen then is within a year from now, the road will officially be vacated at that point, and it reverts to the butters down the center line. Whoever owns land on one side gets half of it, and whoever owns land on the other side gets half of it. When that's done, you know, those owners will accomplish, well, I would say Saxon will accomplish what they were looking to do is clean the title with respect to the section of Holland Street actually reverting to them. So this just to give you guys an update as to that process, see if there's any questions that I can try to answer. And then the thought would be that we would actually hold a public hearing at the next council meeting.
All right, thank you. Questions or comments from the council? Sounds pretty straightforward, I think. Okay. And everybody is okay with staff moving forward for, I think the next step would be a public care, and is that correct, Dave?
Correct.
All right, looks like in general, the council's supportive of that, so thank you. Moving on to item B, a proposal by staff to update the city's sidewalk occupancy policy for eating establishments.
So this section of. The ordinance is really administered through Public Works, but planning and code enforcement receives probably the majority of phone calls either with questions or complaints or just process. How do we get to occupy the sidewalk? What are the rules around that? How is it involved? This section ordinance is not used that often, but as a result of COVID last year, we had a number of requests by big businesses to occupy the sidewalks specifically for outdoor seating. That kind of forces us to look at this section and say, hey, maybe there's some things we could do to change it. Again, it's not a section like it's utilized that often. But some of this, I think, is just housekeeping and others of it, maybe just changes that we want to consider. I'm in anticipation of trying to make things a little bit easier for businesses going forward if these requests are made. My memo kind of outlines what some of those are in summary, but you also have a section of chapter sixty six. With strikeouts and underlines that show the changes that would be considered. I guess to highlight just a few of them, one of them would be making sure that there's adequate width on the sidewalk when occupied by any businesses. We'd actually reduce that width. Right now it's at six feet. We would get it down to five feet. That would provide businesses another foot of additional space on the sidewalk, and we would still maintain ADA requirements. Looking to provide the businesses the ability to expand seating in front of other businesses. So if you have a business on Lisbon Street. Maybe that only has fifty feet of frontage, but you'd like some additional seating and the business on either side of you is willing to accommodate you. Great, let's allow that to happen. Just give us written permission from that owner. That's something that currently isn't allowed right now. Allow this to expand to other businesses that may be displaying merchandise. We don't have a lot of retail establishments right now on Lisbon Street. But there is a provision in our ordinance that says right now that if you have merchandise outside, it's limited to literally one foot within your building. As Lisbon Street continues to revitalize and new businesses look to go down there, should we have some retail establishments? Be nice to give them the ability to occupy more of the sidewalk with their wares out there. So the thought is to make that consistent with eating and drinking establishments, that as long as you maintain five feet of passable sidewalk out there. Or not be able to allow them to display their merchandise. You'll see in the ordinance, a lot of these provisions are specific to the Santrville. The thought being why not expand that throughout the city while there isn't a lot of sidewalks with commercial activity? That might have wide enough sidewalks to accommodate these provisions. If there was a spot somewhere in the tree streets where a business didn't want to occupy the sidewalk, either with their wares or we had an eating and drinking establishment. Why not provide them the ability to be able to do that, whether it was some type of cafe setting or something like that? There's been some discussion about whether or not to allow occupancy to occur year round. Oh, keep in mind, this is a draft at this point, and I've been having discussions with Public Works because they have really, this is falls under their jurisdiction as far as being able to occupy sidewalks. Making sure that their equipment, excuse me, any obstructions are out of the way, whether it's for construction, snow plowing, street sweeping, sidewalk sweeping, things of that nature. We know that given COVID that some businesses have been successful and operating year round in their outdoor environment. If we want to try to allow that to occur on city sidewalks, maybe that's something should should explore. But we'll know Public Works has some questions about that because there are concerns about getting that. Seating and any barriers and anything like that out of the way in a timely fashion, so we can do appropriate snow removal. So that one might warrant some more discussion with staff and maybe the council has some input as well. And then basically whether or not we should have a permit process. There is a permit process right now, but it doesn't really apply towards this. The seat and sidewalk policy talks about occupancy for construction purposes. If someone's digging a hole out there, replacing pipes or something, it doesn't really apply to the current provisions we have now for eating and drinking establishments or people showing merchandise out there. So the thought is that we would come up with maybe some type of permit. Maybe it's yearly, maybe it's not even a permit, maybe it's just approval. Where we can make sure that the operator knows what the rules and expectations are with respect to obstructions. Sidewalk ones, things of that nature. And so there's some language in here about cleaning that up, so there's actually a clear permit or approval process for that. That's basically it. So the thought is tonight to get some guidance from you folks. I think we might have a couple tweaks. To do still in talking with Public Works, just to make sure we're on the same page, but we wanted to get this before you folks get some input.
All right, good, thank you. So I'm gonna throw something out there for the council to consider before turning it over to consider. So I really believe that if you own a business in Lewiston, you have a sidewalk that's wide enough in front of you, that this should be an automatic thing, that you're welcome to use the sidewalks. And when a business applies, there should be a checkbox on the application, not applies for the sidewalk use, but applies for a business license. There should be a checkbox on the application, you know, if you intend to use the sidewalk, check that box and staff make sure they get the rules to you. So I haven't had an opportunity to talk to Dave about that. I briefly mentioned it to our city administrator, but I'd like to. Maybe hear thoughts around that possibility, and I just think that really, we take that extra step to be business friendly in this community. Dave, you have, and I realize I haven't talked with you ahead of time, so.
No, not a problem. That would work in some circumstances, but not all businesses require a license. So if you're an eating and drinking establishment, you would require a license. You'd see the clerk's office for that, and that's something that we certainly could. Talk about with the clerk's office as far as amending some of those licenses, maybe so there, you know, are you, do you plan on occupying the sidewalk? If yes. Here's another piece of paper to let you know what the rules are and the expectations. If you're a retail establishment, you're not selling food, you're not selling any alcohol, most likely you're not going to need any licenses from the city at that point. So we might miss those folks somehow, and we'd have to think about how to reach out to them.
Yeah, and I think in that case, we just, they know, you know, they have to require to notify us, but to actually have to file an application, pay twenty five dollars. I'm just, I'm not sure that's the best way to get our businesses thriving, so. My opinion only, and I'll pass this over to the council now. Councillor Ray, I believe you had your hand up first.
Great, thanks. So I'm a big fan of that, especially for eating and drinking establishments. I think retail, it would make more sense to have a conversation when that happens. So I am in favor of what the mayor's suggesting. And Director Hediger, I apologize if you're not the right person to ask for this, but. Given that this was kind of piloted last year in a couple places, were there any complaints received that? I don't, I feel like I wasn't made aware of any, so I assume there are none, but I'm not sure.
No, well, and that's where our office comes involved because we do get the phone calls. We've had a couple where maybe. The barriers that separate the seating from the traffic. If the barriers are located really close to the curb line, it can be difficult to open the doors of your vehicle at that point. So we toyed around with the idea of should we be requiring all seating be placed along the front of the building? And the five feet width of sidewalk be maintained from the curb line towards the building. We've talked to a handful of businesses and they'd like to see as much flexibility provided as possible. But that was, and when I say we got complaints, I mean, we're talking probably a half a dozen complaints. Some people were complaining about, as the council is aware, you know, we adopted an ordinance where there's no smoking on Lisbon Street. And some people were complaining about smoking still occurring in proximity to eating and drinking establishments. I think that was generally it. I mean, there's some concern again about making sure that the area is maintained, cleaned. I should have noted that one of the things that we've since talked about amongst staff too is making sure that these establishments keep their section of sidewalk clean. Sweeping it regularly, don't just push it out in the curb or blow it down in the curb, but actually sweep this area. If they do their part, maybe other businesses will catch on as well.
I think that's great feedback to know about, Director Hediger. I, I again would be in favor of making it more automatic and more business friendly for eating and drinking establishments, retail not so much. And then my last question. How do marijuana businesses fit into this? Because I have some concerns about if they would be able to sell on the sidewalk. And just some, some significant concerns about how many of those businesses have cropped up and if this would apply to them as well.
Good question. So I will check. I believe there's provisions. So from a local perspective, there's nothing that would keep that from occurring. But I believe there are state law that prohibits that from occurring, that it has to occur, the sale has to occur within a building. We can check for you and get back on that exactly.
I think that would be really helpful, especially as we consider the environment that we're setting up, especially for that Lisbon Street corridor that I represent. I wouldn't want us to inadvertently permit something that I don't think the council would be supportive of. Thanks.
And just a really quick, one, I appreciate you supporting the idea of food establishments, but I think even retail. I mean, some of our immigrant community business owners, last year I noticed had like a small rack with dresses hanging just outside their front door. And that's where I think that should just be an automatic that we, you know, if they're in the downtown area or on the wide sidewalks that, you know, we should not be charging those businesses twenty five dollars so that they could do that, so.
And we don't necessarily need to charge anything. The thought was more that there's a checks and balances, but certainly even without any fee. If it comes to the attention of police, Public Works or Planning and Code, and we see something that's an issue, you know, hey, here's a section of ordinance, you know. Bringing it to compliance or there is consequences.
Yeah, no, and I would agree with that if we see an issue because some, it'll be a learning curve, I think initially, but I think after that it should become pretty standard. Councillor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with the fact that we shouldn't be charging our businesses for this. However, I do feel that approval should be required. That's going to make it a little easier to enforce. You know, otherwise we're going to go through several evolutions back and forth in order to affect compliance. If you've got somebody requires approval, you give them a hand sheet that says, okay, these are the rules. And then you can enforce those rules when there's a complaint, so no fee, but should require approval. We should require anybody that wants to use the city sidewalk. To at least get approval of the city in order to use it and be provided with the rules for the use of it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Jolinas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just another voice of support. I agree with you when you talked about this should just be an automatic thing and not something that we have to do annually. I think it's a great idea. I would be in favor of waiving the fees for at least a year. I think a lot of these businesses are really just trying to come back. Our way of supporting them, I think, is by, you know, definitely trying to make. You know, the sidewalks and the whole, that whole section just. You know, more, more supported for sure. And so I think I would be in support of not just the eating and drinking establishments, but also retail.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Patengill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too, you know, wholeheartedly support your idea. And then one, one other thing that to also keep in mind too, by putting things out in the sidewalk for people to interact with and look at. With, you know, retail establishments or people looking at clothing or whatever, whatever else is being sold. They're gonna stop at the next place that has something out on the sidewalk, and then they're gonna stop at the next place and shop. And then they're gonna go get a table that's outside on the sidewalk and sit and eat and have food and drinks. And then they're gonna continue to shop at these other places. The, these are the very small, simple steps that revitalize and invigorate economies. In profound ways that. You just, you don't know why you overlook these, these small, small decisions that have such meaningful impact on the communities and the businesses and the people that live there and support all of this. Ecosystem that it, that it really is. So I wholeheartedly support making this as simple, as simple as possible and supporting our people.
All right, thank you. Councillor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I just, you know, kind of echo what all my colleagues have said so far. Yeah, I'm definitely supportive of what you kind of proposed, Mr. Mayor. It makes a lot of sense to me for both, you know, restaurants and retail. Yeah, and anyway, we can waive fines too. I'm definitely in support of as well.
Fees, not fines, yep. All right, any other questions or comments from the council? All right, with another workshop session coming, we're gonna keep this discussion at the council level this evening. So Dave, do you kind of have the guidance that you think you might need?
Yeah, I'm good. I will continue to work with Public Works. We'll make some tweaks and then we'll come back to you with actual changes to that. It sounds as though the, at this point, the consensus is not necessarily a fee, but some clear standards as to what the expectations are out there. And yeah, I'd agree with councillor Patengill, you know, part of the thought here is that, you know, try to get a more lively, engaged sidewalk to occur out there and hope that'll occur over time.
All right, good. Thank you for bringing this to the council for our approval. Very good for business. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item C, the temporary wellness shelter update. And I'll turn this over to our city administrator just to do intros and introductions on the item.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilors. Deputy City Administrator Dodi, Dodi brings in.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilors. Deputy City Administrator Dodi, Dodi brings in Stephen McDermott, who will be leading the discussion from Main Housing and giving us an update with a few other folks, Sean Yardley They'll walk us through a quick update of the wellness shelter as it stands, temporary wellness shelter. And they plan to extend that through September thirtieth, as well as talk about some other programs that the Main Housing is is working on throughout the state. You can maybe make introductions of everyone with you.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the introduction, Dennis. Thank you, councilors and mayor for having us this evening. My name's Stephen McDermott. I'm the Strategic Planning and Outreach Coordinator for Main Housing. With me tonight is Sean Yardley from Community Concepts, Danny Carone from Lewiston Regional Technical Center, and Denise Lord from Main Housing to provide an update on the temporary wellness shelter ongoing operations. And I've been asked to talk about the redesign of the homeless service system in Maine and any potential future programs. So just want to start from there. I, I one want to say is I appreciate that you've had a healthy and long evening of conversation. And I don't want to read from the packet to you. So I will touch base and happy to answer any questions as we go through or elaborate on any points in there that you would like me to speak more to. But just a quick overview, in June, Main Housing worked with CCI in a local hotel to set up a quarantine and isolation shelter for individuals and community members who could not safely quarantine or isolate at home after being identified as a potential close contact or somebody who has been diagnosed with the COVID nineteen. As we moved into the winter months, it became apparent that there was a need for non-congregate emergency shelter for individuals who would be unsheltered. We worked with CCI, Community, Community Concepts, the hotel, and talked with the city about increasing the use of the hotel to, for sixteen rooms, twenty-eight beds of emergency shelter for individuals. The anticipated end date of that project was April thirtieth. Due to several factors, one being an, an extension of FEMA's approval of non-congregate shelter, we plan to continue operations through September thirtieth when FEMA's approval is slated to end. One of the, one of the, some of the unanticipated consequences of this program, or outcomes, I think, are a good way of putting it, are the show, the program created twenty-three employment opportunities for individuals, nineteen of them being full-time for part-time. The program created twenty-eight emergency beds, which have been essentially full since November fifteenth, providing over forty-five hundred nights of shelter for individuals who would otherwise have been unsheltered. The program partnered with the Green Ladle, who then partnered with five or six local businesses to provide three meals a day to all guests on both the quarantine and isolation side and on the emergency shelter side, hoping that Chef Caron will speak a little bit to the impact that that has had on the Green Ladle, but also to the impact it had on restaurants during a time of decreased business and being able to provide three meals, three consistent meals and maintain their staffing levels. Additionally, the, the cleaning and laundry services were provided by two businesses based out of Lewiston. And that was that, a lot of this was designed and coordinated by CCI, so a lot of credit goes to Sean and his team for not only creating a responsive program, but a program that included and engaged multiple segments of the local business community. I, at the top, I highlighted the number of community members who have accessed the quarantine and isolation shelter over just shy of nine months at this point. To demonstrate the impact and how the need has ebbed and flowed, so a hundred twenty-two individuals to date, thirty-nine individuals accessed it over the first five months, with then twenty-two people accessing it the following forty-five days, thirty-two people actually accessing it the following forty-five days, and a bit of a slowdown over the past forty-five days back down to twenty-nine. So there continues to be a demand and need for quarantine and isolation shelter along with the emergency shelter. We're fortunate to be able to access the FEMA Public Assistance Grant Program to provide the funding for this. And we're also able to access existing resources to depopulate the hotel so individuals can find more appropriate transitional or permanent housing wherever their needs are, right? So we acknowledge that not everybody is ready for independent living and working to find the appropriate placements for them. Let me just check, make sure, I want to make sure I'm going through and addressing every part while not reading. We have been working since early twenty twenty-one to depopulate the hotel. That has been a goal of ours. We acknowledge the goal, this is a temporary program. So depopulation is an important component. After a conversation that I had with the mayor and city administrator last week, I contacted all five local shelters. And one of the things that we heard was that it used to take about three months to support somebody in finding permanent or transitional housing. The average for the local shelters is now closer to six months for an individual with resources, taking longer for other individuals. So that has played into why a transition is needing to extend. The other part is that CCI is currently working to transition operations to Preble Street, who will be bringing in additional resources to depopulate the hotel using their diversion rapid rehousing programs and other case management experience for this population. And I'm going to just stop there, not wanting to ramble or go on for too long and answer any of the questions that you may have on the update.
Good, thank you. Questions or comments from the council? Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Steve, and folks for being here. Not, this is all great work, and I do want to commend that. But notably absent is comment on the zoning conversation. So I I'm sure the city administrator can provide an update on that. I I'm very curious to hear where that is.
All right, I can just quickly comment that the, the ship, the hotel is not zoned properly for a shelter. And we do have Director Hediger still in the audience, we can probably speak more technical side of that.
Hey Dennis, Dennis, let me just interrupt you. Your, your, your mic is, it's really kind of difficult to understand more than half of what you're saying.
I'm going to recommend maybe asking Director Hediger to come in to speak to the zoning. If, did that come through?
Yes, I did. Welcome back, Dave. Thank you.
The Bruins game, this is interfering now, you know.
Did you hear the city administrator?
I did, yes. Yeah, so the question was about the zoning out there. The Ramada is currently zoned highway business, highway business zone does not allow shelters. It allows motels, hotels, inns. We knew going into this, when the shelter was going in there, that that was going to be a temporary fix, given COVID and whatnot. So it was kind of, all right, let's let this happen. But as far as the long-term use of this facility, that's going to either require, well, quite frankly, it'll require a zoning change or some other type of amended to, to allow the continued use there.
Thank you, Director Hediger. And can someone remind me when the state's COVID nineteen emergency runs out next? And I'll just also comment, as I'm saying that, that I think the city is going to be considering that soon as well. Is that correct?
Are you asking me, Alicia?
I think DCA Doughty is unmuted, so he, he looks excited.
No, you just broke up for a second, so I was smiling because I wasn't exact, I think you asked when the governor's, like, emergency order ends. I believe it's May fourteenth at this very moment in time. I have not seen an extension. I don't know, Steve, if you've seen any, but May fourteenth is the best I, best I know.
Okay, and then I guess my question to Steve is, are you planning to apply for this zoning change? Because I think, I, I think once those states of emergency run out, I think that's the time when we look at long-term use, as Director Hediger is saying.
Yeah, I think that's a great and complex question, right? Because we don't know how FEMA's, FEMA will be impacted by that change in emergency status. So that may impact funding source as well. So it's a pretty broad question. So if the state ends its declaration of emergency, we need to look at what the National Declaration of Emergency says and then what FEMA's response is there. Obviously willing to engage in conversations with zoning, looking at the definitions of shelter, identifying what per-bed arrangement means. We, we're under the impression that the hotel is still operating, the hotel, and is not a not-for-profit or religious organization. So operating as a hotel with a population that is being served with additional supports to ensure that their needs are met.
Okay, I, again, I will commend the work that has been done through this, through these efforts. But I think, you know, when, when we talked about last time, you know, it wasn't council vote either time that we talked about it. But I do think there is some level of say that the city should have in this process because we are responsible for, for the calls for service that we hear about and constituent complaints and that sort of thing. So I think as much transparency with that side of the process will be helpful in continuing to garner support from those who do recognize the good work that's been done.
Of course. Okay, thank you. Counselor Colleen?
Thank you, Mayor. No, I just want to, you know, vocalize my support for CCI as well as Preble Street. Because I've been involved with both of them and the great work that they've done, especially for our homeless population and for families who cannot quarantine because of, you know, living in multifamily buildings and can isolate or don't have the privilege to isolate in large settings. So again, I really appreciate the work that you, the two organizations have done, as well as you, Steve, and extending this towards the end of the year. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm disappointed to learn that we were asked to give approval for this, and we gave approval with the understanding that it was going to end on April thirtieth. We are now in direct conflict with our zoning ordinances. If we continue to permit this in violation of our zoning ordinances, I believe the lawyers call this piercing the corporate veil. It goes by the wayside, and pretty soon, we don't have the moral authority or the legal authority to enforce our own zoning. I believe that if they're in violation now, a notice of violation should be served on them forthwith. And if the governor, and I have no doubt what the governor is going to extend the emergency, we are going to be addressing that, I believe, right off quick. We've made that request, both of the mayor and the city administrator. So if we ended on the local level, I don't think FEMA can supersede our zoning ordinances based on this. But I, for one, am disappointed to think that we were not told ahead of time that this was even going to happen. It's like, oh, well, I guess if you found out about it, now we got to tell you what's going on. And I'm quite frankly disappointed that it's happened this way. I have nothing against CCI or Preble Street, but I don't like the way this has happened. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other councilors, questions or comments? Counselor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as mentioned, that Preble Street would be taking the place of CCI at a certain point. Did I hear that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is anyone from Preble Street here tonight?
Not that's been pulled into the room. Dennis can, or?
Is there somebody that would like to invite?
Is Mark Swan in the room as well?
Yes.
Can be.
Okay, if you could, if you could pull him or Daniella Cameron in.
Swan is on his way.
All right, I guess I'll just ask, I guess I'm curious about what the transition process is going to look like. I have a ton of faith in CCI. They do great work in our community. I'm just not really familiar with Preble Street. And so I do have some reservations about, about this. And so, you know, CCI being involved, I'm very kind of alleviated there. But what's the transition going to look like? How, what can it, what is communication going to look like with you guys in the city? Us in the council particularly? What's that going to look like?
Sure, I can, I can take a stab at that, Counselor. We have been in conversations and kind of planning mode with CCI and Main Housing for, I don't know, several weeks at this point, I think, since Sean and I first talked about this possibility. At this point, a lot of our activity has been around making sure we have the staff on board. And we had a great meeting with the current CCI staff who work at the hotel and invited all of them to continue with us and to apply for jobs as a Preble Street employee instead of a CCI employee, but essentially the same position. We were really, really pleased that the vast majority of the staff were interested in that. And I think we have like twenty-one or twenty-two out of twenty-three people coming straight over as Preble Street employees when, when then, when that transition happens. We also have talked about keeping all the contracts, some of which Stephen has mentioned with regarding the food and the laundry and that kind of thing. We have no intention whatsoever of fixing something that ain't broke. So that's our, that's what we've been focusing on at this point. I was actually kind of waiting for this meeting to happen, and then I was going to reach out. Well, Sean and I have talked a little bit about this already, but getting an introduction via Sean to the city manager and and others in Lewiston that we should be talking with on a more regular basis and set up a, a line of communication and and build that kind of relationship. So we're very open to that, very, very ready to do that.
Okay, okay.
More you want to hear, but.
No, that makes sense. And so if I'm hearing right, like staffing levels aren't going to drop?
No, no.
Okay, okay, all right, that is helpful. Thank you. I guess I'm curious, why is, why is CCI discontinuing?
So, when, excuse me, last, a year ago, we were asked by the city and by Main Housing to step up, if you recall, and operate the shelter at the Armory. And we did that. There was a need for the COVID positive shelter. We agreed to do that. And we saw all of it as time limited. We were a large organization. We do a lot of things really well. Running a shelter is not something that we sought to do. And we, I think we did a good job, but it's not in our wheelhouse. I never operationalized it to build it into our infrastructure. So it was a, it was a off-to-the-side kind of line of business that frankly, I oversaw at a high level, and our HR director provided the HR function. But it was never incorporated into all lines of business because we had no intention. And, and to counsel Clement's concern, I reached out at the end of March, early in April to remind the city. I thought I was, there was a communication staff who, but I directly communicated that our intention was to end the operation at the end of April. And I was really concerned with what was going to happen with the folks that were there. And at that point in time, I had made contact with Preble Street because I wanted the city to have an option that was not just turning twenty-eight people out onto the street with all their, all their belongings. I was concerned about that. It's not for me to decide. But I didn't want to just have that date come and not have any options. And so that's what, that's what I did. And, and frankly, I left the state for two weeks to visit a newborn granddaughter out of state. But I made that communication before I left. And then, as Mark said, our staffs were working with each other to ensure a smooth transition of the operation, if that were to come to pass. And, and that's what we did. But I did all of it in good faith, in partnership with the city. And I, I, I was always concerned, this is, these are not easy roles to play. It's a tough population, not only the people, but the, the, the attitudes of the community and the, and the frustrations that people have, whether they're on the street and you're, you know, standing in business downtown or in a shelter, but they're part of our community. Um downtown or in a shelter, um but they're part of our community. And I and I won't go further than that, so we were trying to be a good partner with the city, and I'd like to think we were.
All right, thank you. Councillor Cleve.
Thank you, Mayor. Um Sean and Steve, I'm wondering, cause there's, you know, similar shelters and um. In Bangor and Portland, do they need it to like, you know, do rezoning in in any of the hotels?
So I can only speak to what our experience has been, and and to date, we have not been made aware of zoning changes that are needed. But I think the flip side that I should acknowledge is that I have not looked into each area to see if they're zoned to accept shelters as well. So just to be fair on both sides. We have not been asked, they have not been asked to rezone the hotels, but I have not checked to see if rezoning is required.
Um okay, and my other question is to Dave, so if. CCI or Preble requested, you know, rezoning, how, what is the process? How long will that take?
Um it's a, it leads to a trip to the planning board and two trips to the. Council for uh zone change to become effective. There's some ability and I would loyalty their administration or the city clerk. Whether or not. Uh you could.
I can't hear you very well, I don't.
Yeah, Dave, Dave, you're breaking. Yeah, it looks like he froze up. I don't think you can hear us either at this point. Uh so, you know, I think, and Dennis can jump in. I mean, there is a process. It's not gonna, it's not a two-week process.
Now, are we any better?
Yes, much better, I think. Go ahead.
Can you guys hear me now?
We can, but I'm not convinced you're here solidly. Go ahead, try.
Oh, that's normal.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Yeah, it's it's a two to three month.
Yeah, yeah, you're you're breaking up.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and try, Mayor. Coming through this time, I think what Director Henninger was trying to say, it's about a two to three month process. Involving, uh you know, stops into the planning board of recommendations and coming back from the council. Um I I know I'm missing parts of that that process here for Dave, uh but I think that's, it's a two to three month process is really, I think, best. You're trying just in terms of time line to get that done.
Okay, thank you.
Um and my other question is like, what is like, yes, we gotta follow policy and, you know, um. And and the law and like, you know, rezone properties the way they should be, et cetera. If if some other cities are not requiring, even though, or like not asking these, you know, partners to not rezone their area. My question is like, what is like so critical for the city of Lewiston to to also ask for? Why, why are we different from these other cities is my question, and I think we need to support. Our most vulnerable community members, which, you know, the homeless population, the people who cannot isolate, the people who are getting tested. Positive for COVID, et cetera, et cetera, um until the end of the year, until FEMA um ends um their funding. So I definitely support this even without zoning. Thank you.
Uh all right, thank you for your comments. I got, you know, I gotta jump in here because uh. And I'll follow up with a question to Steve, but our largest hotel just off of our interstate is not the place that we should be having a shelter. Uh that will be the first thing that visitors to our community will see. Uh I agree with, I want, I think Lewiston has absolutely stepped up to the plate with the wellness shelter at the Armory. Uh and even then, we had a deadline, we were told, but then it shifted to another location. At the request of main state housing. Lewiston currently has five shelters, not including the wellness shelter. And some people will be very critical of our face ba- faith-based ones, but I'm not. Uh they provided a service to our community for decades. Uh and I I know of several homeless folks that have utilized their services. Uh they also do job placement at 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 some of these, so. Uh the idea that Lewiston has not provided services to the homeless population, this council currently is uh. Uh approved uh in our budget, uh resources for a resource center. And honestly, the state should be focused on a resource center statewide, multiple resource centers. Uh and we know that there are things that work and works for them. Uh but Lewiston stepped up ahead of the plate. Now tell me another community in our region that has done even ten percent of what our community has done for the. For the homeless and vulnerable population, and I'm not sure that there are any. Uh and if this is regional, that's what that means, regional. It doesn't mean Lewiston. It means the region provides services, so. I, you know, I'm gonna remind councillors that I hope we consider all these things as we work through this process, but one thing I'm adamant about. Temporarily at the remoter, I'm good with that. Having a homeless shelter long term, just off of our interstate. Uh I I just do not believe that's the appropriate place. Uh and then I think for all the service providers here. Uh Juan, Sean, Mark, we really appreciate the work that you folks do. Uh but Lewiston has a very small geographical downtown area compared to like Bangor, Portland. Having a shelter that impacts a very small business downtown area. Uh would be dramatic for our business community, so those are, those are other things that I think people need to consider. So as we consider doing our part, uh let's also consider. The consequences of that on others in our community, so that hopefully we can navigate this in a way that doesn't uh directly impact. Uh another population because you're trying to help one population. Oh, uh and Steve, one other question. Are there any current plans with the remodel to do anything different than other than. Providing this temporary shelter?
Yeah, there are no current plans beyond what we're talking about this evening. We are talking, continuing to talk about temporary. And I I thought I may have been overusing the word temporary in my memo, but we are, we are very much talking about something that is not permanent. Not meant to replace the work that the local shelters are doing. It is meant to enhance and provide a temporary solution to a temporary problem exacerbated by COVID nineteen. Through, you know, as identified and acknowledged through a state of emergency being declared at a local, state and federal level. So again, this temporary program, you know, we are, part of when we came initially came FEMA's program was uh. Was approved on a month-to-month basis. And at some point in early twenty twenty-one, I don't have the date right off the top of my head. They extended the waiver through September. Which allowed us to think about what challenges were being faced while we were meeting with each hotel. Do to provide there or to develop and deploy depopulation plans. And when it became apparent that depopulation by April thirtieth would be a challenge, it became incumbent or. A real route to provide long-term access to housing, right? After this temporary support by get, by getting individuals connected to permanent housing. And I don't mean to conflate permanent housing at the remoter, right? Temporary at the remoter, permanent housing and housing that exists elsewhere.
All right, thank you. Uh councillor Jensen.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um I guess I would completely agree with what you just mentioned um. Few moments ago about how Lewiston does a lot already. Um for many communities and also that it would be in Lewis's best interest to have some kind of shelter like that, uh more towards the downtown area. Um so I completely agree with that. I guess looking at this, cause when we gave the approval um last year, I was very much under the impression that this would be ending on April thirtieth. So um, you know, I I guess it was kind of surprising to hear that this was gonna continue, and so I certainly hope that this is being phrased as an ask of the council and not, not. You know, kind of telling us what's gonna happen, cause this is up to us as far as zoning goes. Um I guess I'd be curious, has um anyone, anyone in charge like CCI, Preble Street, uh Main Housing, talked to any other? Uh like locations like Brunswick, Auburn, um cause Lewiston's, we've done a lot already, so maybe it's someone else's turn.
Yeah, councillor Jensen, we have taken a proactive approach to finding locations and it's working with private business owners. To engage them to utilize their location. So in response to that, we have looked at a statewide response and we have found hotels in several different municipalities. At a certain point, it becomes difficult to move midstream. Which may, which is part of the reason, right, which would make it hard to move to a different location, but also we have. In our continued search for hotels, right, for quarantine and isolation, there's been challenges in identifying partners.
Okay, all right, uh it it makes sense. I I get that. I just hope you guys keep trying, cause Lewiston, we've, we've done our part. We have.
Councillor Jensen, I will say that our goal right now is to depopulate hotels. And in acknowledging that, again, Lewiston has has provided a significant. Amount of support, first through the wellness shelter to individuals who were not identified as needing space to quarantine and isolate. Then through the quarantine and isolation shelter when it was set up. Then at the, then at the temporary model, right, that's being run, and I'd love to to really actually give. Uh Chef Aaron an opportunity to speak, because I did ask him to to join us this evening after a conversation we had recently, but to talk about. The impact this has had on the green later on the students there.
Oh, I'd love to speak. When Megan Pox approached me um back when we started this project, she asked if the green later would cater. Three meals a day, seven days a week, and I get excited about things and I love doing things and and uh. But my thought process was, these restaurants in Lewiston were really struggling. And so we turned it over to five restaurants in the green later. First, I gave the green later lots of experience of the kids from ordering, from cooking to sanitation. Uh where we're not doing catering right now because of the pandemic. Restaurants, uh we included six Lewiston restaurants to deliver foods uh five days a week. Uh some of the quotes I got from restaurants uh was, if it wasn't for this program chef, I would have had to lay off three of my chefs. Uh another one, if it wasn't for this program chef, I think we would have closed. I asked Megan, I said, Megan, you know, we can do this meal for six dollars a plate. But let's do it for thirty dollars for lunch and dinner, and it made it reasonable for the restaurant, so they were making money. Uh and it really worked. It's a great partnership with the restaurants, and I really think it got them through the pandemic. Before the loans came, before everything came, you know, they were making a a substantial pay for delivering food. Uh and restaurants were asking me, can I take part in this? And so we, but they have been all Lewiston restaurants, just so you know.
All right, huh. Yeah, I'm really happy to hear that. Um and I know I'm I'm kind of asking some tough questions tonight, so I don't want to take away from the fact that I am very appreciative of the good work you guys do. I am a humanist. I lo- I love helping out people, so I do want to take time to recognize that. Um, you know, especially CCI, you guys have done a lot, like Sean, you really do a lot for the community and. Anyone who knows you, Danny just knows that you only do good things, and so. Um, you know, even though I'm I'm kind of hesitant about extending until September, I I I don't want to ignore the fact that you guys have done really good work, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh councillor Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh just reaching back for a moment here, Bangor and Portland are irrelevant to this conversation. Zoning ordinance that is being violated is here in Lewiston. It is our zoning ordinance. Regardless of what Portland does, uh and I've said it many a times, I don't think we want to be Portland. Uh anyway, we have a zoning ordinance. It's being violated. I think we need to get a notice of violation out on that. The word temporary has been thrown about, thrown about, thrown about here. We were told this was going to end April thirtieth. Uh everyone's good intentions. I mean, we were never included, to my knowledge, in a conversation. As to where this was going to extend beyond April thirtieth, and that really. Frost me. You know, we we were just disregarded entirely. Here we are, providing a service. We're providing the goodwill of the citizens of Lewiston for this place to exist, and we're ignored. I don't like that.
Yeah, if I could just, if I could just speak to that one for one moment, councillor Clement, and I apologize if that's how you feel. There were several communication chains, and one was a broken commen- communication chain between my, the city administrator and myself. Before and after I left for a paternity leave. There were intentions to make that connection and make it known. There's also a communication chain. Where there was thought to be a formal communication and it was in an informal communication. We strive to do better and we will do better. Dennis and I, and, you know, unfortunately soon to be someone else, right, but working in communication chains will. Have identified a path forward that will ensure that that doesn't happen again. So while I understand the frustration, that was not the intent.
Well, Grandma used to say, the road to hell is paved with good intentions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and I, you know, I do want to acknowledge that uh I think there's been a. A common understanding that communications uh need to be better, and I think uh as Stephen has said. Uh at this point, we are seeing uh better communications on 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 their part and our part as well, and that's why. Once, once we have a clear understanding and Dennis can chime in, but. Uh we made it very clear this needed to go before the council. Uh would you agree, Dennis?
I would agree. Uh there there was a a communication attempt in in about the middle of uh April. Um you threw a phone phone message from uh Mr. McDermott. Uh we did. After um April thirtieth or just before April thirtieth. Um and we did agree, um you know, there there needs to be stronger communication.
Right, and you're still having mic issues, just so you're aware. Uh councillor Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um and it it's great to hear the additional context of how businesses benefited from this, and. I appreciate Sean's com- comments regarding CCI. I remember. Last spring, him saying, this is not the business we want to be in, and this is not, this is not, but we're taking this on, and I think. Passing it off to Preble Street is a responsible decision, knowing that they have proven themselves in this work, so I I think that's all great. My hiccup or or point of friction perhaps is the best way to put it, is that. None of this has come before us in a vote, and so it's come before us in, I think, three or four different workshops. And while I do think the mayor um does a nice job of letting folks comment, there hasn't been a public hearing about this. Um and so I I would argue that the public has been deprived a say in this. Um it's just been the council giving the go-ahead or not. Um initially. When the shelter was at the Armory, it was right next to my house and also in my ward, and so. I received a lot of those complaints. I'm not sure. I think this is in councillor Delinas's ward now, um and I'm sure. Uh she could comment on if those constituent calls have continued coming in. I think that is is my biggest point of friction, that there has not been a public hearing on this. Um folks have not. Had, you know, full court press, like, notice that they could come say something about this. Um and so the extension feels. Really hard to swallow as a result of that, when our job and our charge here is to represent the folks who are reaching out to us. And I think the city administrator is right to have scheduled these in in workshop settings to talk through what the process was, but. As we get closer to normal, whatever that is, um and moving out of the state of emergency for both the city and the state, I think. That that should have an impact on what the shelter operation is doing and that. I'm I'm very glad to hear acknowledgement that communication hasn't been as good as it can be, and that folks want to do better, but. I think the public being left out of this loop is is something I'm really uncomfortable with, even though I'm super supportive with the organization and the way things have been done.
And just to be clear, the last approval did go before the council for a vote, the resolve to allow funding.
Thank you for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, and then this one, what's different here is they don't need that approval from the city on the funding piece. But I will, I will, in Dennis's defense, uh he has advocated for public, this at some point, we gotta get to a public discussion. If we're gonna continue this extension, because I believe, you know, uh there are many people in the community that would support this, but I also believe this is gonna be. Hot ticket item when it comes to a true uh open public discussion right now. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I totally forgot about that last vote, uh so thank you for that, and thank you to the city administrator for representing that interest, cause I I do think. Uh to your point, Mr. Mayor, and I'm sorry I interrupted you, um uh to your point, I think lively discussion, but hopefully productive discussion could come from that.
I agree. Thank you. Councillor Delinas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um first off, I just want to say thank you for the work that's been done. Um I live right next door to the Ramada, so I'm. Pass that facility six, seven, sometimes eight times a day, depending on my schedule. Um and I'll admit, you know, I drive in, I drive around the back. I mean, it's in my ward. I want to know what's going on, and I will tell you that I have not received a complaint. Um I think it's being done well. Um I have no interest in turning out twenty-eight individuals. I think it's being done well. I have no interest in turning out 28 individuals. But on the other hand, I, I hear you say, Mr. McDermott, that you, you know, the intent is to depopulate. And I, I think that's great. I believe you. And I understand the rationale behind wanting to extend. What I can't get my head wrapped around is did everyone think that FEMA was going to supersede the date that's been a long time, we've known it's May 14th, the governor's date of May 14th. I just, I guess I just find myself thinking like, how did we get here? Like, how did this happen? Where now we're looking at this period of time and I'm uneasy about that. I'm not uneasy about the wellness shelter. I'm not uneasy about the work that we're doing. And, and it's right in my backyard. So I have no protest there at all. And in fact, I'm just so thankful for the work that's been done. And I do see it coming to an end. You know, with the goals you have in place. Again, I just, I just keep scratching my head thinking like, how did this happen? How did this date come on? Well, we, you know, so maybe someone can speak to that.
I'm happy to, but more specifically, when you say, how did this happen? Is it, are you talking about the state of emergency versus the FEMA deadlines or just the project or?
No, I understand the project, but how did, how did we get to this, this pressure with this? Like, all of a sudden, we have the governor's date coming up on Friday. All I can imagine is that we thought that the FEMA date, which is, I think, September 30th, that's the proposed date or what we're thinking about. Did we think that was just going to supersede the state date? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah. So, so I, I don't want to presume what was thought about when that September 30th date was determined. What I will say is that FEMA gave that extension a blanket waiver. What I've mentioned before is that non-congregate sheltering generally needs a waiver that's approved on a 30 day period.
Okay.
They, seeing as it had continued since, I think, April on a monthly basis, and it was creating what I would imagine administrative burden at FEMA to just, because they have to get one from each state. So it goes from the state to the state emergency management agency to the FEMA region, and I'm assuming up to FEMA National, back to the region, back to the state. So I think that, that may have led to that. And I think my, my other part is not knowing, you know, fully admitting that I'm not aware of how the governor's dates are determined and identified, that process, right? But I know that they are generally either set and then extended or set and then not extended. And I don't think that they are always operating in parallel, given that FEMA's approval isn't for a declaration of emergency. But the, the use of a resource or the use of a resource to pay for a type of activity in a state of emergency. So I hope I didn't get too far down the wonk hole on that one.
No, that helps me. Thank you.
And, and when, when we talk about depopulation and, and it is challenging and it is hard to find a home for individuals who may have co-occurring needs along with experiencing homelessness, but we have been meeting, I meet with Sean's team every Friday for about an hour to talk about what's going on. What are the challenges? Where do they need support? What can we model? What do we need to adapt? And I've been doing that the same with Mark's team for their, for their location, except on Tuesdays. So in recently, so beginning in February, March, we started depopulation plans and conversations. We will continue those and begin to, and continue to implement, but also acknowledging that now what is, we will not take, admit new individuals after a certain point, right? And we can do that with a known end date. If the state of emergency changes or the FEMA approval goes because there's no more declared emergency, right, that will change those plans and we will amend and, and adapt. And to Counselor Ray's point earlier about, you know, public comment, th, th, these are interesting times. You said a return to normal. Obviously, we always want public comment, municipal approval and public participation. And when you're, you know, we are really viewing these as emergency interventions. And they've happened outside of that order. Under normal circumstances, we would, those would have been followed and we can do better to ensure that the public is heard in emergency times as well.
Thank you for that.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, seeing none. Steve, Sean, Mark, Denise and Danny, we appreciate you attending the me, the meeting this evening and, and sharing to the, and sharing with the discussion. So thank you all very much.
And, and I'll just put out there, we haven't gotten to the, the other parts about the homeless redesign. It's nine o'clock at night. Dennis and the mayor and Dale all have my contact information. I am more than happy to spend time talking about the homeless system redesign that Main Housing has been working on with the Corporation for Supportive Housing and the Statewide Homeless Council for the past year, and then the American Rescue Plan. I really appreciate everybody's time this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And you know, and just real quick, Steve, so there are going to be further discussions as this regional plan is, is done. And I would encourage that that be a regional discussion where other communities are invited along with Lewiston. So that we're all, no one, one government is being focused on. I think it's important if it's regional, we have a regional discussion.
Lewiston is part of the Andrew Scoggan Hub, not the Lewiston Hub.
Thank you. And again, we want to do our part. Thanks. Okay. With that said, our final item is an executive session persuading to MRSA Title I, Section 405 dash six dash A to discuss a personnel matter regarding the city administrator's search process. So entertain a motion. Moved by Counselor Khalid.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Delinas. Call the roll, please.
Counselor from Word One?
Yes.
Word Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
And Word Seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
All right. Thank you all. And we'll see you at the next executive session. Thanks.